Good evening, everyone. Welcome to City Hall, Council Chambers for tonight's public hearing. It's June the 28th, 2018. And we, first of all, acknowledge we are on the unseated home lines of Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh First Nations. We give thanks for their generosity and hospitality on these lands. And Madam Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Robertson in the chair. Counselor Louie. Counselor Stevenson. Counselor Deal. Counselor Jang. Counselor Reimer. Counselor Ball. Counselor Carr. Counselor Affleck. Counselor De Genova. You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And Counsel...
Counsel Brenner?
Easier. So we... Let's dive into tonight's public hearing. First of all, we have our new procedure with Committee of the Whole. And in order to involve... To avoid the procedural uncertainties which arose at a previous public hearing due to the loss of quorum while we were in Committee of the Whole, the city clerk has advised that while counsel is required under Section 1813 of the Procedure by Law to move a motion to go into Committee of the Whole at a public hearing, it's not required to sit as committee of the whole during the hearing. Therefore, it's her advice that the motion to go into Committee of the Whole be put to a vote and failed by counsel. So, once again, we go through this little procedure. Would someone like to move a motion to go into Committee of the Whole? Moved and a seconder. And all those in favor of going into Committee of the Whole? And those opposed? And then that fails. We sit as counsel rather than committee. So with that procedural piece, once again, behind us, we have one item, one big item on the agenda for this public hearing. That's the text amendment for amendments in the Chinatown district schedules and the like and policies. So we have, at this point, fifty... Last count, seventy-two speakers on this item. So it may be a challenge for us to hear everyone who's here to speak on this this evening, but we will be diving into the speakers' list shortly. I'll just go over the couple of the details. First of all, Mandarin translation of tonight's meeting is available in Committee Room Number One here on the third floor. That's just to the west of us here in the council chamber on the 12th Avenue side of the building. So there's Mandarin translation in there. And I'll just give a few updates to those of you who are here to speak before counsel. The guidelines for speakers at counsel. Speakers have up to five minutes to make their comments. And we... You should limit your comments to the merits of the report that's being considered here by counsel. Speakers should also state whether they are supportive or opposed to the recommendations. And speakers may speak once for up to five minutes. If you have additional comments, you can submit them in writing on paper to the clerks or you can email them to publichearing@vancouver.ca. And if you are speaking on behalf of three or more persons or three or more organizations, you have an additional three minutes to speak, eight minutes in all to speak. But the persons or representatives of the organizations must also be here and not be speakers themselves and identify themselves to counsel. You don't have to use all of your five minutes. I will let you know when you're approaching the five-minute limit. And there is a timer on the podium as well that has your time on it. And you may have questions from counsel following your comments. If we do not hear from all of speakers this evening, we will recess and reconvene this meeting on Wednesday, July the 4th. We can do that starting at 9:30 a.m. We have the day basically held here in council chamber on July the 4th to hear speakers if we don't hear from everyone tonight. So with that, we're ready to dive into the item that's on the agenda. And that's the text amendment for amendments to the Chinatown HA1 and HA1A district schedule design guidelines and policies. Madam Clerk, can you read the application and the summary of correspondence we've received? Please.
This is an application by the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability to amend the HA1 and HA1A district schedules of the zoning and development bylaw and their respective design guidelines to address community concerns about the changing character and the pace of development in Chinatown. The amendments include introducing a maximum net floor space ratio, changes to maximum building heights, requirements to provide non-residential uses, provisions for retail mezzanine and laneway retail spaces, maximum widths for development sites such as site frontage, and maximum widths for storefronts. Also included is a recommendation to revoke the rezoning policy for Chinatown South, HA1A. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. Since referral to public hearing, counsel has received seventy pieces of correspondence in support of the application, one petition in support of the application with 1,165 signatures, forty-two pieces of correspondence in opposition to the application, one petition in opposition to the application with sixty-nine signatures, and seventeen pieces of correspondence regarding other aspects related to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to approximately 3:20 p.m. today.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have our General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability, Mr. Gil Kelly here, along with the team, Helen, Tom, and Paul in particular, who worked hard on all this. Thank you for being here tonight. And you want to lead things off with...
Thank you.
...words of wisdom?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try my best. Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, Gil Kelly. I just wanted to make three points really quickly, kind of overview points, and then I'd like to turn it over to Helen Ma, who will provide a summary of the information you requested when you referred this matter to public hearing so that you and the audience have the benefit of that information. It was detailed more fully in the yellow memo that you received, which has also been made public. The first point I wanted to make is just to remind you, and Helen will get into a bit more of the dates here, is that when counsel was first brought in 2010 and 2011, a sort of a heights policy to examine for Chinatown, there was a recognition that as a potential economic development incentive at that time in that market, that this increasing height and bulk in the district might be a benefit to revitalization of the district. There was some caution about that. So when the plan was adopted in 2012, counsel asked us to study that and see how the effects were happening and come back in three years, which would have been 2015, to review that policy. We began that work in 2015 and have taken actually three full years and a bit more to do that review, not only as we watched the sort of market and conditions change, but to do further consultation with the community during that time. So it's been quite an extensive community consultation process. Despite what you might hear from some, I think it's been a quite long and intensive period of engagement and our own observations of the conditions in the district. One of the key lessons that we have observed is that not all the new development, which did come through, and there wasn't a huge amount of it, but some of the buildings that did come through taking advantage of that higher buildings policy, if you will, turned out not to be what the Chinatown plan expected to be. And we heard a lot of concern about that through the process. And that's really the reason that we're coming to you with these revised development policies. The second thing I wanted to say, just on that note, and this is from... Coming from my own experience elsewhere in Chinatown in San Francisco, which has been decades' worth of continuous planning, several decades ago, a realization came to us there that we really needed to... The real strength economically of Chinatown was its uniqueness. And part of that uniqueness came from moderated building heights and densities. And so those were capped in San Francisco. And I'm going back now two or three decades. And that has been seen there as critical to the success of Chinatown, not only for its unique character, but in fact, as a foundation for the economic revitalization that's occurred there. There have been other pieces of that. It's not the only piece of the foundation. There have been pieces having to do with stabilizing and improving low and moderate-rate housing, particularly for Chinese seniors in that case, a number of cultural supports and so forth and so on. But I just wanted to say that I think my own observation from that and some other experiences that economic development does not always equal real estate development. They're not exactly the same. So in this case, I wanted to just point out that I think the uniqueness of Chinatown is its real economic strength. And I think that's what the Chinatown plan overall and these revised policies are meant to enable, which is to carry the uniqueness of that district forward and then to augment it with all the other work that we have called for in the plan, which has to do with enhancing the cultural aspects, the street life, the cultural aspects of all kind, and working with local businesses to improve those... The health of the businesses there. We don't feel as a staff that those depend on necessarily on higher buildings to achieve. I just wanted to sort of put that perspective out because it gets kind of lost in the conversation sometime. The third point I wanted to make is that we're anxious for you to resolve these questions around the physical form so that we, all of us, the community included, can move on. We think just stabilizing things, whichever way you go on the height issue, is important. We have, as you know, in our budget now positioned a whole group that's led by Tom Wanklin. It includes Helen and others from both planning and arts, culture, and community services to really do that next phase of work, which has to do with those other aspects of community building in Chinatown, which could lead to the UNESCO designation. But whether or not UNESCO ever happens, a lot of that work around activation, cultural enhancement, and so forth, we're poised to do that work. We're just a bit stuck in the starting gates until we get some of these physical form issues resolved, which are kind of creating a lot of angst and are sort of top of mind for residents there. So I'll end my lecture there, but I just want to put that perspective out because I think it is time for this counsel to make this decision. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Helen, who's going to update you on the information you requested. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Ma.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Helen Ma, Senior Planner with the New Chinatown Transformation Team. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present amendments to the Chinatown District Schedule, Design Guidelines, and Policies. This is a very important piece of work that we embarked on three and a half years ago. We have undertaken an extensive and thorough consultation process, and we have received a large amount of very passionate feedback. Although not everyone agree on how to proceed, and they don't see eye to eye on everything with each other, one thing that everyone can agree on is that Chinatown is very important to the whole city and beyond, and many people care very deeply about its future. The recommendations in front of you today strive to balance all the voices that we have heard and create the right conditions for Chinatown to remain special and vibrant. Before I begin the presentation, I would like to acknowledge the members from the community here tonight. I want to thank them, including youth, elders, businesses, property owners, societies, and many more organizations and individuals for their countless hours of volunteer efforts and their continued dedication to the community. The rest of the presentation will be done in English, and I will do introduction in Cantonese now. Sijang, Sijuan, Gaoaihou, Hai Ma Huiying, I Tonyang Kai Jing Zai Mian Fa Fa Zhen, Juan Lan Xiao Zhou, the Gao Guo Kuai Hua Si, Geng Ya Hui Wei Li Gang Jai Hua Fu Fat Zhen Ching Ta Ge Shou Gai, Gom Ha Sami Ban Wan Zi Tian, Ode Tien Ho Joe Li Gao Fong Yoo Yew Gia Gia, Ode Tien Ho Joe Li Gao Fong Yew Gia, Ode Tien Ho Joe Li Gao Fong Yew Gia, Gom Tien Ho Joe Li Gao Fong Yew Gia, Gom Tien Ho Joe Li Gao Fong Yew Gia, Gom Da Gia 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 Gom Da Gom Da Gia Gom Da 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 Gom
Higher income residents. And also, they are typically non-traditional. So this would include coffee shops by international and local chains. We also saw signs of land speculation activities. There were lots advertised for site assembly purpose. There's also unrealistic density expectation due to no clear development density in the zoning. We also saw sites being flipped. Four sites were sold twice between 2012 and 2016 without redevelopment. These activities have a big impact on land value in the area. The average assessed land value doubled from below $2 million to close to $4 million in 2016. If you look at the year-to-year percentage increase, it's also quite dramatic. The assessed land value increased every year since 2011. And overall, this increase outpaced the city's average by 5%. The highest year-to-year increase observed in Chinatown was 25%. In conclusion, these changes were massive for a small community like Chinatown. And the displacement of traditional businesses due to redevelopment, and high property taxes due to steep increase of land values, and also other factors such as aging of owners are really affecting the lives of vulnerable seniors. More changes are on the horizon, we're told. Nearby redevelopment of St. Paul's Hospital and the Northeast Falls Creek will continue to increase market demand for commercial and residential spaces in Chinatown. One of the objectives of allowing additional heights through rezoning was to leverage public benefits. The Vancouver Chinatown Revitalization Committee recommended to staff that public benefits should be put towards society buildings rehabilitation, and to add affordable housing for seniors to further support Chinatown's culture. So what was the need and what has been achieved? In terms of heritage and culture, we now know that it will take at least $36 million to renovate the 12 priority society heritage buildings. The public benefit that we achieved from one of the rezoning projects was $1.2 million. We decided that this would not be enough for full rehabilitation of one building. So instead, we recommended putting this money towards critical repairs for 31 projects. In terms of housing, there's an emphasis on seniors' housing for Chinatown. And based on one study, it was estimated that at least 3,000 units in the next 10 years would be needed in Metro Vancouver for monolingual seniors or ethnic seniors. From one of the rezoning projects, we're able to achieve 10 seniors' housing units. An additional 12 units were achieved, but that required a city grant and a large equity investment from a nonprofit organization to make them happen. In summary, the public benefits achieved fell short of expectation or need. The data that I just went through showed us the scale and pace of change in the community. Specifically, concerns about loss of character started as early as 2012. A group of 20 leaders from the community, including respected late Chinatown Architect Joe Wei, expressed their concerns in a six-page document. Mr. Zhou, commenting on the rezoning applications which were being reviewed back in 2012, said, "These buildings did not reflect Chinatown, but threaten to overwhelm it." As large out-of-scale developments were approved and built, the outcry in the public continued to grow. These sentiments were confirmed in the public consultation that we started in 2015. We have heard clearly that people are worried about the pace of change and the loss of Chinatown's character due to new development. People have also told us that trading the trade-off of character for public benefits is not worth it, based on what has been achieved. And in general, there were concerns that the implementation of the Chinatown vision is out of sync, and that culture and community are not being prioritized. I want to emphasize that through our consultation process, we've heard from many people that they are not opposed to development, and they support gradual densification. But they're asking us the question, how could development contribute instead of damage the character of Chinatown? We know that the revitalization of Chinatown cannot be solely dependent on buildings. However, as policy planners, we have a role in setting a framework for development to occur. So as a priority task, we ask ourselves, how do we adjust development policies to realign with the vision of culture, economy, and meeting the needs of the community, as explained in the Chinatown vision? To realign development with the vision of Chinatown, we want to set the right conditions for quality development to take place. In summary, we want to clarify zoning and density expectations. And this will help remove uncertainty from the development permit process that is causing frustration and concerns from all sides. We would like to adjust the scale of development by proposing improvements to the zoning. And we want to send a message that we are supportive of development, but more specifically, quality development that fits with Chinatown's character. This map shows us the zoning boundaries of Chinatown. Chinatown has two sub-areas. Historic Pender Street, which is labeled HA1, and Chinatown South labeled HA1A. The rezoning policies from 2011 covers the area outlined in the red line. Buildings can be considered up to 120 feet tall in this area, and up to 150 feet tall on the four blocks along Main Street outlined in the dotted line. We're making four recommendations to council to improve the HA1 and HA1A district schedules or zoning, make corresponding changes to the design guidelines, reduce parking and loading requirements in order to encourage small lot development, and rescind the rezoning policy for Chinatown South. So these are the specific things about zoning that we're adjusting, and we'll show you examples very shortly. First of all, there's no maximum density defined in Chinatown zoning, which is highly unusual in Vancouver compared to other districts. To make it consistent with other zones and to clarify expectations, we're introducing a maximum density measure as floor space ratio, or FSR. We're also introducing a maximum number of floors in order to have better floor-to-ceiling height to make housing units more livable and to make the ground floor commercial units to have more character. This maximum number of floors is within the existing maximum heights, which we are not changing in the zoning. We also have requirements to provide non-residential uses on second floor in order to diversify Chinatown's economy and to provide spaces for small businesses. There are provisions for retail mezzanine and laneway retail spaces that match with Chinatown's character. We're introducing maximum width for development sites in order to prevent assembly of multiple lots in Chinatown. And we're also introducing maximum width for storefronts. So now, I would like to introduce senior urban designer Paul Chan, who will go over building examples with you.
Thank you, Helen. Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Paul Chang, senior designer for this program. On the left in the slide before you is an example of what could be built under current zoning. The building can become quite bulky, especially due to no clear density limit in the zoning. Observe projects attempting to lower floor-to-ceiling height in order to insert an additional floor. On the right is an example of what could be built under the proposed zoning. Because of the clear maximum density, there is an opportunity to shape the building better. In this example, we showed a street wall height that is respectful with adjacent buildings, upper-level setbacks, and a private courtyard that increases livability within the development. Other things we are also proposing is non-residential uses on the second floor to provide spaces for small businesses and cultural uses. The maximum number of floors within the existing maximum height provides space for a commercial mezzanine that is often seen in heritage buildings, allowing floor-to-ceiling to be taller for better livability. Laneway retail space is also encouraged in the proposed zoning. Here are the examples for Chinatown South, HA1A. The ideas are the same as Pender Street, except the maximum density and height are higher in Chinatown South. In Chinatown South, we are also restoring the outright height to 70 feet, which was the outright height prior to the 2011 zoning changes. The maximum height of 90 feet remains unchanged. We are removing residential parking requirements and reducing loading requirements for small lot developments in order to better incentivize small lot development. These adjustments are reasonable measures to protect Chinatown's character while allowing quality development to proceed. These measures, such as maximum development densities, exist in zones across Vancouver, so it is nothing new to the development industry. Recent development permit approvals on Kiefer Street show that the development industry are responding positively by anticipating these changes. Two projects were recently approved using the development permit process. They are getting closer to the buildings we want to see and fit better in with the neighboring buildings nearby. Back to Helen.
Okay, this technical table compares the proposed changes with the existing zoning. It is included in the staff report to council. To assist the community in understanding this information, we have provided this technical table since spring 2017. Since then, we've made revisions to it based on feedback, and we have let the community know every time there was a revision. The last change to this table was made in April this year following consultation with the community, which included businesses and property owners. And this is the technical table describing the change in Chinatown South. In summary, our proposed policies is recommending that council no longer consider extra-tall and extra-wide buildings. Instead, encourage new buildings to respect the historic scale and pattern of Chinatown, and for these buildings to include smaller storefronts, commercial mezzanines that fit with the historic character of the area. In addition, a lot of people have told us that they would like the community to be more involved in the review of new developments. A process to review the Terms of Reference for the council-appointed Chinatown Historic Area Committee has started to see how the community can be better represented in that process. There's also a desire for staff to do more work to integrate cultural values into planning policies, and this is something that we intend to do for the next phase of the Chinatown planning work. So I'll go over our consultation process now. Council asked for a report back from staff in 2015 to review the results of the Historic Area Height Review Policies. It took us additional three and a half years to complete the review and conduct consultation. We've completed four rounds of consultations since 2015. We have listened very carefully. And each round of consultation, we made revisions based on what we heard. We know many people care deeply about Chinatown. So we took special measures to make sure people can participate in our process, especially those who don't normally come to our meetings, such as seniors who don't speak English. We have made unprecedented efforts in providing translation service. Notifications, information handouts were fully translated. We had bilingual staff and professional translators at our events. The staff report today was also translated. We're very proud of this work, so I'll show you here. I believe this is the first time we have done this and is included in the public hearing agenda, and we believe this is really important for us to do. We have used a variety of engagement methods, including meetings, workshops, information sessions, one-on-one conversations, pop-up tea cards on the sidewalk, as well as open houses. We further shared the word by doing interviews with Chinese and English media. As a result, we've heard from a very diverse group. At the referral meeting, there was a question about staff's effort in reaching out to businesses and property owners. So here's some additional information. We mailed out notifications to property owners and tenants in 2016, 2017, and 2018. A total of 18,000 pieces of notifications were sent. We also met with the Chinatown Business Improvement Association and the Chinatown Merchants Association in 2017 and 2018. We have met many business owners and property owners at our open houses, workshops, and information sessions. We have also received comment letters from the BIA and VCMA 2017 and 2018. Our consultation was thorough and extensive. We have talked to, over this process, over 1,000 people. We did a survey online and also available in print format. Over 300 people responded. There were a large amount of written submissions, over 400. We've also received petition with large number of signatures. All in all, there's a lot of passionate responses from people all across the city, telling us that they really care about Chinatown. I'll share with you the Talk Vancouver survey responses, and this is a summary. A majority of people, over 70%, supported the policy directions to no longer consider extra-wide and extra-tall buildings. People also agree that buildings should be smaller in scale on narrower lots with smaller storefronts. And a lot of people also agree that the community should be more involved in the review of new developments. We believe the proposed policies are reasonable measures based on public feedback, including property owners. And these proposals will help us achieve the goals that we set out to achieve in the Chinatown vision. Zoning, as Gil has said, is only one part of the larger plan for Chinatown. The Chinatown plan that took 10 years to develop is more than just about the hardware. It is also about the software, the culture, the economy, and the community. In 2017, council reaffirmed the three key pillars of the vision and directed staff to do more cultural and economic development work in preparation of a UNESCO World Heritage Site designation for Chinatown. We are starting up a new staff team, the Chinatown Transformation Team, to undertake this work. And we are very excited and optimistic to embark on a journey with our community partners to achieve a vibrant and sustainable Chinatown. This concludes my presentation. The staff team is available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. And I think we're going to go right into our speakers list, as we have many people here to speak to council tonight. And we will start with speaker number one, Edmund Ma, who is the Vice Chair of the Chinatown Historic Area Planning Committee, who'd be followed by Alexander Wright.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me clearly?
Yep.
Great. My name is Edmund Ma. I am the Vice Chair of the council-appointed Chinatown Historic Area Planning Committee. I'll just say CHAPAC for short. CHAPAC is committed to the preservation and protection of the heritage and character of Vancouver's Chinatown. Our members would represent diverse voices within the community, voices that include merchants, local and professional organizations, members of the public, as well as property owners. In general, we support policies, regulations, and projects that help to preserve and protect this national heritage site or historic site. Since 2015, the team of staff have attended five CHAPAC meetings, giving presentations and updates for their proposal and recommendations. And each time, we have voiced our concerns and provided feedback. And every time, they've come back with a revised plan taking into our considerations, as well as community stakeholders' considerations that they've gone out in the community to collect. The proposed amendments in the Chinatown HA1 and HA1A district schedule, design guidelines, and policies are generally supported by CHAPAC for the following reasons. It sets a maximum FSR and building heights that are more in line with the character of Chinatown and existing buildings on the Vancouver Heritage Register. It provides greater opportunities for and supports the retention and encouragement of small-scale and local businesses. It recognizes Chinatown's tangible and intangible heritage, acknowledging the need to retain both its physical, the physical building fabric and culture. And lastly, by revoking the rezoning policy, the community will no longer have to choose between the provisions of social housing or higher incompatible buildings. The dialogue of Chinatown's future will not end with the adoption of these proposed amendments, and we look forward to continuing the discussion and for the future of Chinatown's success. Thank you for your consideration of these proposed amendments, and we look forward to working with everyone as we work towards a UNESCO World Designation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for being here tonight, particularly on behalf of CHAPAC. No questions for you? Thanks for your comments.
Happy Canada Day.
You too. Alexander Wright is our next speaker, followed by Robert Graff.
I'd like to thank the Mayor and Council for the opportunity to speak tonight. I guess, first thing I'd like to say is just note that I work for a developer, but I'm here speaking as a Vancouverite, and specifically as a millennial who's old enough to remember dial-up. So quite an old millennial. I want to touch, I guess I'll just open with saying that I'm strongly opposed, the recommendation tonight to downzone Chinatown. As a young person in the city, I think I'm not unique in facing some challenges as far as, in general, there not being enough housing in Vancouver and not enough opportunities for people of my generation to find places to live. I think, and to continue to have hope for my own place in this wonderful city and people of my generation in this city, I just have to categorically be opposed to downzonings. I have very carefully reviewed all the policy that is being presented tonight. I've gone to a number of the information sessions that went on earlier this year. And I guess fundamentally, I just don't understand how the particular recommendations around reducing height and reducing density are going to revitalize and protect Chinatown. It is an incredibly, incredibly important part of our city. It has a uniqueness to it and a value to it that, you know, needs to be protected and needs to be cherished. I don't understand how having fewer people living there, fewer people shopping there, fewer people experiencing Chinatown is going to achieve the aims that I've heard people talk about tonight in the introduction. Fundamentally, the city needs more homes, not just for people of my generation, but for people of all generations. There's a huge chunk of people who grew up in Vancouver or want to live in Vancouver or want to move back to Vancouver that need places to live. And I don't think 120 or 150 feet is an outrageous height in 2018 in a community that is this close to the downtown. And I don't think that it would undermine the unique character of the existing Chinatown. In 1912, the Dominion Building was built to a height of 175 feet. That's 100 years ago, more than 100 years ago. So I guess I wanted to say that I, you know, as someone who wants to continue to have hope for the city of Vancouver and for people of my age and younger to have a future in the city of Vancouver, I have to oppose all downzonings in the way that I have to support upzonings like the one that's being proposed for the RT zones and hopefully the RS zones that would bring infill housing and townhomes to much of the west and east side of Vancouver. I know there's many other issues at play here, but I just think it's very important for someone of my age to articulate that we're being squeezed out of the city, and that'd be a very unfortunate thing. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much for being here tonight. Speaker number two, our main list, Robert Graff is next, followed by Andrew Samuel.
Hey, Robertson. I would request that I could change my position with my friend Eric that's in position 30, because he has conflicting schedules tonight.
Okay, yeah, if you're both willing to do that, we'll switch you two. That is Speaker number 30, correct?
First of all, thank you very much for accommodating me. I'm opposed. My name is Eric Petit. I'm a retired Vancouver police officer. And my 30-year career has taken me full circle. When I first joined in 1981, I was posted to what then was Team Three, which is Gastown, Downtown East Side, and Chinatown. By the time I retired, I was the superintendent commanding the north half of the city, which included those three neighborhoods. Now, although I don't live in Vancouver, I've decided to speak before council as I believe I can offer some insight on my impressions of Chinatown and how it's changed since, you know, I first became acquainted with it in 1981. I have fond memories of walking through Chinatown, its abundance of unique businesses spilling out onto the street, the hustle and bustle of a very vibrant and robust community, not just from tourists that would visit, but also from the abundance of residents in the area. It's quite a different picture from when I retired 30 years later. A number of businesses are closed, fewer people can be seen, and the flavor of the neighborhood has changed. It has a feeling of a community that's struggling to survive and maintain its identity. In contrast, you turn to the west, Yale Town. Before Yale Town, there was Expo 86. And before that, I remember there was a number of derelict warehouses and some rundown nightclubs that were there. So how's that gone from derelict buildings to what it is now? Well, the answer is the influx of people and businesses. It's recognized that one supports the other, and both are needed for a successful and thriving community. More so, if you're trying to ensure the survivability of an ethnically-specific community such as Chinatown. To be blunt and very harsh, in my opinion, Chinatown is on its way to decay. If the current trend continues, there will no longer be a Chinatown for people to argue over its future. And that would be an absolute shame for the city as to lose its jewel such as a historically unique neighborhood. Now, I know nothing about development or the economics of development. What I do know comes from 30 years of working in Vancouver and the various neighborhoods. From my observations, I can tell you that without businesses to bring people in and adequate numbers of people living within the communities to support the businesses, it's difficult for a community to thrive. You only have to look a couple streets to the north to see how the loss of businesses and the lack of resident population has ravaged a community, which I, again, have witnessed decline over the past 30 years. I spent years working with city staff through the Vancouver Agreement to try and address and fix some of the issues that had developed in that neighborhood. Now, I only raise this to illustrate how difficult it is to put a neighborhood back on its feet when it has dipped so low. Those of you that continue to do that work know full well what I speak of. I understand that there are complex issues with many facets, and that's important to get these things right. However, I strongly believe that Chinatown can be made to succeed and thrive through bringing in market housing and not only supporting, but encouraging the development of new businesses that are reflective of the Chinese community. It can be done. Look across to, you know, Richmond. Currently, or as of 2011, when I looked at the census, Vancouver had a Chinese resident population of 28% versus now Richmond has virtually double that. Why is it more attractive there than here? My opinion, it's because potential residents and business owners are not getting what they want and what they need is not being offered to them in Vancouver. So they go elsewhere. Suffice to say that one of the roles of Mayor and Council is to support the residents and make the city attractive in all aspects to encourage individuals to spend their leisure time, shop, live, and stay within their city. I believe that by limiting the opportunity for people to live within Chinatown, you will not attract the businesses to invest as they may not see it as financially viable. And you won't get what I call the hustle and bustle of the people that you need to support and regenerate the community. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Cheers. Next speaker, number three, Andrew Samuel, followed by King Mong Chan.
Hi there. I'm Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Andrew Samuel, and I'm opposed to downzoning Chinatown because I care greatly about my neighborhood. I'm a partner in a small business in I'm a partner in the small business in Chinatown. And coming to work every day for the last eight years, I've seen a lot of changes firsthand. Oh, thank you very much. That's cool. I'm, I'm concerned that the small successes our neighborhood has had over the last few years, a renewed sense of optimism, energy, and an increase in street traffic and shoppers will be killed by this proposal. And my concern is anchored in housing affordability, like the last couple of speakers we've heard. Three major studies from UBC, the CD How Institute, and the Fraser Institute, and even Mike Harcourt, Harcourt, all conclude that the housing crisis in Vancouver is due to excessive regulation and supply constraints. Vancouver is in a housing crisis, I think that's pretty widely accepted. And yet this proposal would reduce new housing in Chinatown by 60%, making what can be built even more expensive with fixed costs spread over fewer homes. A best-case scenario under the downzoning might see a handful of very expensive buildings catering to elite buyers. The critics of the current zoning say that by reducing buildable housing by 60% will save Chinatown, but they don't really explain how. How will fewer, more expensive homes be attainable for working people and families? How will fewer, more expensive homes support community amenities? We'll end up with fewer senior centers and public spaces. How will fewer, more expensive homes better support social housing in Chinatown? The answer, of course, is that reducing the number of homes in Chinatown will be worse for housing and worse for our community. The people who developed the current community plan, some of whom are on council today, had a vision for Chinatown with unanimous support from everyone in Chinatown, every Chinatown group. And now a couple of dozen people are trying to disrupt the process for their own ends. The, the most vociferous critics I've met seem to be more anti-development really than pro-Chinatown. On the other hand, some of the people who want to maintain their current zoning have businesses or properties that have been in their families for generations. And yet their wishes seem to be ignored. Even so, there are some good ideas in the revised proposal. Formalizing design guidelines and smaller storefronts, absolutely, will help retain the character and street rhythm of Chinatown, and I think that's great. But a neighborhood's character is about much more than just buildings. Chinatown's character is rooted in bustle and action on the street and not just people stripping wires and bicycles and selling things they found in dumpsters, because that's what's going on in Chinatown right now. How is building fewer, more expensive homes going to bring positive energy back to Chinatown? I think it's easy to leave a neighborhood for 15 years and come back and say, wow, look at this change. This is terrible. I mean, you could really do that almost anywhere in Vancouver. And it's easy to pick a few faceless targets to blame for that change. It's easy to focus on the negatives of change and pretend the positives just don't exist. If you think back, for example, to the 600 block of Main Street, the new buildings, I mean, I, I agree, they're, they're big, they're, they're, they're wide. And they don't, they don't support the kind of natural street rhythm of Chinatown. I agree with that. But they're a vast improvement over the faceless, abandoned, and dangerous and drug-infested blocks that were there before. You know, if, if you go back and look what was there before, it's actually an improvement. The reality of change in Chinatown is far more nuanced than the critics perhaps make out. I worry about the impact of taking 60% of housing out of Chinatown. Despite the rigor applied to the current plan, which took 10 years and had a housing study and an economic study, the proposed downzoning has not been tested for its impact on housing affordability or the local economy. No studies have been done on the downzoning. How will fewer, more expensive homes attract residents who will shop in the traditional shops in Chinatown? How will fewer, more expensive homes change the dynamics of a neighborhood that has for decades been stagnating? The answer, of course, is that inequalities will be accelerated. Building luxury condos with absent owners will render Chinatown a failed neighborhood. Think Coal Harbour without the views, for example. Downzoning Chinatown will recreate the conditions that led originally to its decline. A vibrant neighborhood needs people. And taking 60% of the people out of Chinatown will remove the critical mass needed to make Chinatown safe and energetic and ensure culture stays alive. Let's instead fully embrace the vision that was developed by the entire community for Chinatown in 2012, to respect the past and build a future that welcomes back the descendants of the founders of Chinatown with a compelling reason to live, shop, and work. To council, don't leave a legacy of unaffordable housing and harming the very neighborhood that this downzoning purports to help. I urge you not to support this proposal without at least amending the density changes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for coming tonight. And addressing council, speaker number four, King Mong Chan, followed by David Lam, number six.
Good evening. I'm switching, I'm switching with number 60, Linda Peng.
Okay, 16, which, what was your number? Number 60. Linda Peng, okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Linda. I am a member of the Concerned Group of Chinatown, Chinatown Concerned Group.
I have been living in Chinatown for more than 10 years. I am familiar with every location, cranny and nook in Chinatown. I love Chinatown. Because it has more than 100 years of history. It is the second largest Chinatown in North America. It is a publicly recognized historical, cultural district. We are proud that it is. It is applying to become a heritage, heritage site at UNESCO. Right in Chinatown, you can see a lot of heritage from Chinese culture. The city planning of development of Chinatown, when the new buildings are built, it has to integrate with the existing cultural flavor of Chinatown, cultural characteristic of Chinatown. If you just build it at your own wish. Either changing or expanding. Within a few years. Chinatown's characteristic will be completely lost. And the 100 years of history of Chinatown will be lost thanks to us. So that's why the friends, us members of the Chinatown Concerned Group are requesting. Number one. Suspend any profit-oriented real estate development projects in Chinatown. Increasing the height will not help in preserving the characteristics of Chinatown. We strongly support our application to be a heritage, heritage site for UNESCO. We support appropriate cultural, cultural flavored businesses. And through the reduction of property taxes. Or other kinds of subsidies. We can also attract more businesses. For example. Chinese restaurants for dim sum and groceries, grocery stores. Et cetera, et cetera. We should regulate Chinatown's development to allow only non-profit developments. We should build a trans-generation and multifunctional community, community center. That's the end of my comments.
谢谢
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. And our next speaker is speaker number six, David Lam, followed by Joel Kaloff.
Thank you, council, for giving me this time to speak. I, I represent my family, who's been here for close to 50 years as landlords in Chinatown. Now, all the people that are opposed to the development of Chinatown and are supportive of the historic open markets for the senior citizens and the low-income residents don't really practice what they preach because my produce open market store cannot give away their lease. No one will take it over. They're not making any money, and they're getting less and less business as the days go on. Now, people cannot shop there because it's just not convenient. There's, the storefronts around me and other produce stores are closing like one by one. So when you have something like a big box store like TNT and with transit right beside it, it just doesn't make sense. And also, when you have a giant restaurant like Flota, compared to when I was growing up and we had five or six different places for dim sum to go to, everything is just getting more and more condensed. So when you put restrictions and only allow small storefronts who are going to compete with these big box stores and big businesses, it's protecting their monopoly and handicapping everyone else. So as I recall, a couple decades ago, what happens after dark in Chinatown? It, everything shuts down, the Downtown East Side takes over. So do I see that model working going forward? No. My grandparents and my other family members that don't live in Chinatown used to commute to Chinatown just to go shopping. But that doesn't make sense anymore, and I'd only worked because there were no other options. Now you have Fraser Street, Victoria, Richmond, Metrotown, Burnaby. There's no reason. So for, I am against the new proposal for restricting the building density. What good is decreasing building height going to accomplish when right next door, Falls Creek North, you're going to have 17 to 22 stories? And we're going to settle for eight? We're going to push for less? That doesn't make sense. It's, you're just going to be walled off, and it'll be a modern version of the Great Wall of China. All you're doing is decreasing building heights and allowing a better view for Falls Creek North. And when you decrease building heights, and using San Francisco as a model, San Francisco does not have stories that are, I mean, buildings that are 17 to 22 stories high. And to all the people that are complaining that Chinatown is starting to feel like Yailtown, well, when I go to Yailtown, it actually feels closer to an Asian Chinatown than anywhere else in the city because it's busy, it's bustling, it's thriving, it's a vibrant community. And it's not what Chinatown has been like. And it's just starting to get a little bit of attraction since 2011 as people are now actually starting to come there after dark. So how do you plan to support more businesses when you want to do two stories of storefronts and decrease density? It doesn't make sense. Fraser and Victoria Drive are not mandatory two stories. And even then, they have parking issues. And Richmond has lots of parking. And again, people are just not using transit to go shopping in Chinatown. You need more density, you need more people to support the local stores. The city has been so proud of how the Sanwa Centre, which has sat empty for about three decades, short of the ground floor. But what is it filled up with? Art galleries, social-funded special interest groups? Is that model going to support the rest of the storefronts in Chinatown? Where's the foot traffic? What are they selling daily?
Mr. Lam, you're over your five minutes. I need you to wrap up in one sentence.
Okay, so I support going forwards and taking a chance instead of restricting and going backwards.
Okay.
As to before 2011. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here tonight. Speaker number seven, Joel Kaloff, followed by Henry Tom.
Hi, good evening. We would like to make a request to do a swap. I can be here later than this gentleman, and he would like to take my place. He's number 43.
Okay.
Right, number 43, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Theo Kim. I used to be a resident of Chinatown for 13 years. I currently still do my banking and eating, shopping, and drinking in Chinatown. I just want to say that I do agree with everyone who's opposed so far. They brought up very good points. So over the last few months, I too want to see the heritage of Chinatown protected, the culture celebrated, and the businesses flourishing into the future. I feel that this is an achievable outcome, but not without the support and vibrancy that comes with residential development. I think we would all agree that body heat is essential to the success of any community with shopping, business, entertainment, and cultural uses. The amendments to the current Chinatown zoning schedule before you will no longer offer residential as an outright use. I think this is crazy. Unfortunately, I experienced the consultation events around the 105 Kefir project. I can't imagine other developers are keen to subject themselves to a similar process for any development over the 1.5 FSR of commercial. It's extremely risky. PD were wholly conformed with the outright zoning and were still rejected. This discretionary zoning needs to be changed.
Could you just move back from the microphone a little? That's okay?
Sorry.
It'll distort.
I apologize. Oh, okay. Chinatown cannot survive on tourism alone. The Chinatown I know and love is an inclusive community. While we do have a social responsibility to look after our low-income seniors, Chinatown is not only for low-income people, and we cannot only build SROs. I understand reducing the height limits. However, I strongly encourage council to remove the conditional language around residential development. Without an influx of new residents to support their local businesses, which make Chinatown so special, this community will starve. I just want to make one note as well. My son now is 20 months, and his mother owns a business in Chinatown on Pender. And they took a big risk moving there prior to what you might call gentrification. So I'm So I'm thinking about, and I've mentioned this in the last time I was here as well, but, you know, reducing potential customers for my, for my son's future is not cool with me. So anyways, thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. And our next speaker is Henry Tom, speaker number eight on the list, followed by Emil Johal.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, council.
You're welcome.
My name is Henry Tom. I'm speaking in support of the proposed amendments to the Chinatown district schedule, design guidelines, and policies as an individual who's lived, worked, volunteered, owned businesses, owned property, developed property in Chinatown for more than fifty years. I participated in the development and implementation of the Chinatown neighborhood plan since the community collaborated with the city in the creation of the Chinatown vision. This vision recognized that a revitalized Chinatown would need both a vibrant business environment and a healthy diverse residential population. Even as the first applications came in under the new Chinatown neighborhood plan, I felt that the new development would be successful at fulfilling many of the Chinatown vision objectives. But I felt they were less successful in capturing the central Chinatown spirit. Almost, almost before the ink was dry on the plan, I joined many of my Chinatown community colleagues in trying to describe and define the elusive Chinatown character and to advocate for, for a review of both rezoning policy and design guidelines to better respect that character. Where I disagreed with my community colleagues was that development applications in progress have to be allowed to their due process. I feel that while it's quite fair to change development policies after careful consideration by community and council, development applications should be considered on the merits and contributions under policies and intents, intents existing at the time of application. I believe that Chinatown revitalization requires a continued participation and investment by the business and development committee, community. It is important to have the confidence that planning policies are fairly developed and implemented. I feel that the amendments in front of council are fair. There has been lengthy and broad community consultation. The planning team responsible for these amendments have been responsive to community comments. I note that there have been almost continuous refinements to the proposed revisions right up to a few weeks ago. I think what I like most about these amendments is implicit recognition that they are not perfect and that we can expect to periodically fine-tune policies and programs to respond to unintended consequences and to adjust to changing environments. Where now, I think that these amendments and the continuing revisions to design guidelines slash policies will help development to contribute to the Chinatown spirit and other community aspirations. I also think that these amendments will provide a measure of certainty for the development and business communities on how development applications will be assessed. Hopefully, the development and business community's confidence in due process, so thoroughly shaken during the 105 Kiefer rezoning and DP applications can be restored. I look forward to taking part in what this amendment calls additional work required in consultation with the community to further amend the design guidelines to reflect cultural values, accessibilities, and seniors' needs. I also look forward to continuing to advocate for even more consideration and relaxations for the, for the owner, user, small lot development, and renovation in Chinatown. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tom, for being here tonight. Next speaker, number nine, Amit Johal, followed by Jeffrey Goldberg. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to speak. I am a resident and property owner of Chinatown. I've participated in the previous process for 105 Kiefer, just to use it as an example. I didn't agree with several rounds of that development until I believed it checked all the boxes of the existing policy, then voted to support it. It's very disheartening to see that regardless of an approved community plan, the city can vote down a project at the development permit stage. This is very disheartening and doesn't leave much faith in the overall process. There is an unnecessary divide, a with us or against us mentality. Everyone has a vested interest and that lives and works in Chinatown and absolutely wants to see the community be a thriving, diverse community. The existing community plan is based on activating and supporting cultural, residential, and economic revitalization. Anyone who is in support of that plan is not only pro-development. I think that's a really big misconception and the conversation tends to get a little jaded, being pro or against. I think there's a lot more going on here. I shop, engage, and use as much local Chinatown retail business as possible. I support my local community. Every retail shop owner and business owner that I've gotten to know and have spoken to has expressed the need for people living and visiting Chinatown in order for it to become a thriving community. We need people. We already lack vibrancy. As somebody mentioned before, when the day is over and the evening is, sets in, it just is, there's nobody anywhere and it's, doesn't really motivate people to want to walk the streets and stroll throughout Chinatown in the evening or at nighttime. The new plan reduces residential and relies too much on retail space. I'm not sure where these people will come from that will use the retail and businesses. We can't expect people from other neighborhoods to spend their money in Chinatown. It's not happening right now. So I'm not sure what would make us think it would happen with downzoning. Also, the focus on the alley access, I would love to see a plan that includes a cleanup of those alleys for people to access. I wouldn't promote it as it is right now by any means. The new plan feels rushed. I attended the neighborhood open house and when pressed the city planners to provide some data on the reasons that they were presenting the changes, they didn't really have any other than the feedback. But I'm not sure who are these people that are providing feedback. The businesses that have claimed development as a reason for them to leave, I, I just don't know who they are and what those, if those reasons are actually accurate or not because I hear the lack of people being the reason. The viaducts are coming down. The hospital is moving into the area. Why should other communities such as South Falls Creek prosper from these massive changes and shifts in the city? And once again, Chinatown be left behind and forced to operate under these proposed changes? It's not viable for business owners and it will not be viable for homeowners. Less homes mean more expensive build-outs, high construction costs, which in turn will result in higher-priced homes. The proposed changes are misguided and misdirected. As a resident, I ask for further consultation with the residents of the community, business owners, and community stakeholders. There were close to eleven community groups consulted for the 2012 plan and this process simply feels rushed. The choice we make today has a profound effect on tomorrow. I ask we take the time to review the data the city has considered when implementing these proposed changes and assure it is for the benefit of all currently living and operating in Chinatown and for those to come in the future. No one is taking any claims to wash out the cultural heritage component of Chinatown. I don't even believe that is on the table for discussion. We want to create a vibrant, thriving, cultural hub of the city that respects the past and those whose shoulders it was built on. I am not in favor of the proposed policy changes and I ask that it not be rushed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for being here tonight. And next speaker is number ten, Jeffrey Goldberg, followed by Michael Sung. Good evening.
Mr. Robertson, councilors, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My purpose here tonight is to try and convince council that the zoning put in place in 2011 and the suggested revisions in the matter before you, that with that, there is a third position, one that might better fit Chinatown's growth and development. I'm here as a property owner. I'm a member of Chinatown Voices, a group of merchants, stakeholders, and property owners who want to be involved in a truly collaborative development process for this third position. The concern is that Vancouver has a housing crisis. We need housing that is appropriate and meets the needs of our population and our neighborhoods. We need more housing units, but more than that, we need a variety of housing types to meet the needs of our diverse population. We need housing stock and it's not being built at the rate that will satisfy demand. The problem isn't capacity. We have space to provide housing without compromising Chinatown's neighborhood character. In fact, the first five buildings that were built in Chinatown took advantage of two derelict commercial buildings, two parking lots, and a rotting single-story building that was about to be condemned. In fact, Chinatown, in the past ten years, has only had seven new buildings. The second area of concern is the, is loss of character. And yes, Chinatown has a special heritage and character in Vancouver. It needs to be cherished and celebrated. I remember Chinatown being vibrant and dynamic when I was ten years old and walked there every Saturday. I personally think Chinatown has lost some of that dynamism. While we don't have all the answers, we, the stakeholders that I mentioned previously, would like a seat at the table to try and figure out how we can get it that way again. There is a concern that new buildings have gone up in Chinatown and the scale of these buildings is inappropriately large. In fact, Chinatown Voices believes that these buildings could have a streetscape that reflected that twenty-five-foot look and feel of Chinatown. Chinatown Voices supports urban design recommendations that respond to the small storefront look but that Chinatown, look and feel that Chinatown is known for. But building size shouldn't be the issue. Why? Because larger buildings are cheaper per square foot to build and therefore can support more social housing components and lower rents. The real issue here is the design elements. City of Vancouver should control the streetscape so buildings look like the buildings of Chinatown of old, set back the upper floors so they don't hang over the street, and benefit from the efficiencies of good design. Chinatown Voices does not support development that displaces people living in the area. But Vancouver has a housing crisis and most, and, and we need to act rather than be, to be afraid to get it wrong. It's more productive to work together to get it right than to do nothing for fear of getting it wrong. And new development is the surest way to get new social housing built as a part. Just like living in downtown Vancouver, Chinatown needs people living in it to be viable. And in fact, the fact that no housing has been lost since the Chinatown revitalization agreement was enacted should tell the tale. Again, lots of consolidation seems to be another one, lot consolidation, sorry, seems to be another one of those unnecessary worries. We don't know of a lot consolidation that's taken place in recent history. Chinatown Voices believes there's an accommodation regarding lot sizes that all parties can agree to once we sit together and discuss it. I suggest we move on. Should we be trying to prevent cultural change through development controls? The cultural future of this neighborhood is going to respond to the decisions made throughout this process. It's not something that we take lightly and it's something that we want to be involved in. Chinatown should not be reduced to being a diorama reflecting some previous period of its existence. It should and can be much more than that and it should be a living, breathing reflection of the people there.
You're over your five minutes. If you could wrap up in a sentence, please.
I will, right now. I've talked a lot about Chinatown Voices, about what Chinatown Voices, what Chinatown Voices is for and against. Let me sum up by saying that Chinatown Voices is made up of a collection of stakeholders with a vested interest in Chinatown. We want people living and shopping in Chinatown.
I need you to wrap up here over time.
Please give us a seat at the table. Let's continue the dialogue and please, let's work together on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And our next speaker is number eleven, Michael Sung. Followed by Carol Lee.
Hi there. I'm Ryan Sung, speaker thirty-two. I'm going to be switching with my brother, Michael.
Okay.
So I think you're going to hear today passionate pleas for historic preservation. I'd like to highlight a different group that's been systematically unrepresented in civic matters impacting the spaces they live and work, Chinatown business owners. They provide the goods, services, and jobs that are the intangibles and heritage that this misguided policy is trying to preserve. Their voices represent a necessary diversity of age, of socioeconomics, of culture, of race, that say that the idea of Chinatown is progressive, not stagnant. I have in my hands sixty-nine impassioned letters signed by individuals from within Chinatown calling for you, the council, to reconsider this downzoning. We have a petition with hundreds of signatures. Some, like myself, are sons and daughters of a legacy in and around Chinatown that stretches back almost a century. Others have come to live, work, and love the area embodying the sense of change and new beginnings that are in the DNA of Chinatown. This change is both respectful of the culture and heritage of the community and inevitable as part of the natural evolution of a city. Here's their story.
My name is Joey Wong and our company is Dollar Meat Store Limited. It's a family business. It means our livelihood for our family to be in this area and to, to survive in this area and, and run our business here. We're famous for our barbecue meats that we have in Chinatown. That's our specialty here at our store. Next five years, I, I think we'd like to see more growth, more walk-in customers back into Chinatown to support our businesses and buy food here. So we're, we're always looking for more growth that way. We do support Chinatown Voices to help maintain the growth in Chinatown and to keeping the buildings at a certain high level so that we can have more population here in Chinatown that actually lives here and, and work here in Chinatown.
My name is Clint Moroz and I have a business called Spacelab. It's actually Long Walk Manufacturing, but we operate under Spacelab. I'm not an antique store. I don't like the term antique store as much or I'm not a vintage shop, but I have a lot of, you know, good stuff people can put in their house to make their house better. It's supposed to go in Ikea. I can see why people don't move in. I see, I've talked to many of my friends, encourage them to move here and they struggle with it. They, they refuse to do it or they've looked at the rents and there's just no way possible. Meaning, you know, like, of course, density is important because people need to live in a neighborhood, but then you need grocery stores and you need, you know, services that people can actually engage instead of buying a place here because it's close to downtown because it's reasonably priced and then not engaging the neighborhood. Because you buy a condo in, in Chinatown, you leave Chinatown because there's so little here to do. Honestly, like after six o'clock, it's, you know, it's a dead zone. There has to be a more cohesive plan to actually help develop and that would involve a lot of, you know, I think tax reduction and density increase. Place has been in transition for so long and nothing's actually happening and there's a lot of gaps. There's a lot of, there's a lot of space that nothing's actually happening. Nothing has happened. I've lived here since 2004 and a lot of the actual like landscape on the ground level hasn't changed in a lot of places.
My name's Jordan Ng. I'm a Realtor and an insurance broker and our company is Success Realty Insurance and we've been in Chinatown since 1959. My family has been in Chinatown for the last hundred years. My parents both were born in Vancouver and they started a business in 1959 called Success Realty Insurance. Chinatown's revitalization was based on three pillars. First of all, heritage. Second was economic revitalization. And third was densification to bring new residents into Chinatown to support the businesses on the ground floor. And that was supported by the historic leadership of Chinatown in 2011. And what I see right now happening is we're moving away from that supporting of business and residences and heritage has overtaken the strategy. I support Chinatown Voices because it brings a balance to the community, for the businesses, the new residents, and it speaks to the revitalization process that the city has been working with the community for the last twenty years.
My name is Andrew Liu. I'm the owner of Ganghua Restaurant in Chinatown. Yeah, I don't agree with the downzoning because it will make less business for us, you know, because I, since the zoning changed the last five years, I can see that we pick out a bit more business because actually more people are here. Then of course you're going to create more business and create more jobs. And if you do the downzoning again, it's going to hurt us again, you know. Like go back to square one, it's not really that good, you know. I support Chinatown Voices. The reason I support them because I think it will actually, government will listen to us. And if we have more voices, of course it's going to be stronger.
I'm VP of New Chart Trading, doing business in Chinatown about twenty-five years. This business is a herbal store. We sell ginseng, some Chinese herbs. I say,年前呢，我们搬因为同一家有两间 location 的，一家在一百号 block，两家，一家在这里一百 block，因为生意一直下跌了，那边的皮费维持不到，所以我们 closed 一间，在一百 block 的，还整完这里一百 block 一间。In future five year, if business in here is still lower, I will be closed. In future five year, if business in here is still lower, I will be close this location. I support Chinatown Voices because we need more residents in Chinatown. And also, we want more business. We want more people to shopping in Chinatown. We want more investment in Chinatown." Thank you.
My name is Joey Wong, and our company is Dollar Meat Store Limited. It's a family business. It means our livelihood for our family to be in this area and to survive in this area.
Okay, and our next speaker is Carol Lee, Speaker number 12. And she's followed by Jean Swanson, Speaker number 13. Good evening.
Nice to see you. Dear Mayor Robertson and councillors, it is a pleasure to be here, and I want to thank the city and staff for all the work that has gone on to get us to this point. My name is Carol Lee, and I'm a second-generation Chinese-Canadian. As you know, my grandfather was one of the founding fathers, probably considered one of the pioneers of Chinatown. Our family owns property. I am the chair of the Vancouver Chinatown Foundation. We own property, myself as an individual. I own a property, and I also run three businesses, most recently Chinatown Barbecue. But today, I'm here as the chair and representing the Vancouver Chinatown revitalization and their collective opinion. The city's proposed changes to the development policy in Chinatown is in accordance with the philosophy and direction that the VCRC feels that planning should go and is consistent with what we recommended a few years ago. At VCRC, we believe that there should always be a balance between restricting unchecked development and the need for change, without which there would be no improvement for our community. I hope the city council will continue to look at our problems in Chinatown with this philosophy of striking a fine balance, of preserving the character and the history of Chinatown, and the necessary future development. I'm just -- actually, that initially was the kind of all my comments, but just sort of listening to a lot of the speakers ahead of me, I sympathize with this dilemma. We are -- this is a very, very complex problem. There's no easy solution. I am there every night and probably till 11 o'clock. So what many of the speakers said, it's very different at night. After 6 o'clock, it's a different town. And this isn't the solution, but it is going to be part of the solution. Is it perfect? No. But, you know, this is a sort of a compromise with very many different stakeholders. And I do believe that the planning department has tried over the course of the last three years to try and figure out some sort of balance. But I agree with, I think Henry Tom said it, that I think we're going to need to probably look at it. We're going to make mistakes. And I think that we should all feel that we're going to need to tweak it and refine it because there will be unintended consequences that we cannot predict today. But I would say the VCRC supports the changes to the Chinatown development policies as proposed by planning. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much for being here tonight. Next speaker is Jean Swanson, Speaker 13, followed by Debbie Goslin. Welcome back.
Territorial territory of the Musqueam, Slavutus, and Squamish people. And thank them so much for taking care of this land for millennia. I'm here speaking as a COPE candidate for city council and someone who has fought since 2011 to keep Chinatown from being gentrified and to get more social housing that low-income residents can afford. I'm also an admirer of all the young and older folks who have fought so hard in the last few years with no profit motive in mind to preserve the living culture and homes of working class and senior Chinese Chinatown residents. The only good part about the rezoning is that it would stop the towers and reduce the frontages. But that's not nearly enough to save Chinatown and its culture for the people who live there. You can't turn Chinatown into a profit-making machine for property owners and gentrifiers and the UDI and still maintain the culture of the living, working-class, and Chinese-speaking community. Just wanted to do a little bit of history. In January 2011, after 80 people signed up to speak at City Hall against the Chinatown Heights rezoning, I was at Carnegie, and we got a call from councillor Reimer saying councillor wasn't -- council wasn't going to hear any of those speakers, but that Chinatown zoning was going to public hearing. And then in April, a few months later, after 167 speakers, most of them opposed to the rezoning, council approved the plan for the towers. And the mayor said, "Saying no to Chinatown neighborhood and who has brought this forward will only increase divisions in the downtown east side." But you evidently didn't count the low-income seniors and people who would be pushed out by gentrification as the Chinatown neighborhood. As a result of not listening to these people, we now have the condo towers, and all the new businesses are gentrifying businesses. And we've lost great Chinatown businesses like Liloi Barbecue Meats and Golden Wheat Bakery. So the people's vision for Chinatown was developed over two years with a process that the city should have used but didn't by the Chinatown Action Group and the Chinatown Concern Group. It says Chinatown is not a collection of old buildings and exotic signs, but a living community that has been built over 100 years. I support their demands for a pause in new market rate developments in Chinatown until the number of social housing units at welfare pension rate in the neighborhood matches the current number of market rate housing units. And after that, 50% of all new residential housing must be for social housing at welfare pension rate. I support their demands to define social housing as units rented at no more than maximum welfare shelter or pension rate, 30% of OASGIS. To limit building heights to 50 feet. To limit the frontages to 50 feet. To have more affordable grocery stores and restaurants. And to rezone 105 Kiefer for nonprofit use only with 100% social housing at welfare pension rate and an intergenerational, multi-use community space there. This is the kind of Chinatown plan that council should be implementing. It will take more than zoning. It requires involving, not ignoring what low-income residents want, and finding a revenue source like the mansion tax for desperately needed social housing.
Okay, thank you very much for being here tonight, Ms. Swanson. And our next speaker is number 14, Debbie Goslin, followed by 15, Kelly Taleko. Good evening.
Thank you. I would like to speak on what it was like growing up in Strathcona in the '70s and '80s and what a vibrant community Chinatown was when I was a child. It had -- every storefront had an occupant. There was thriving business. There was, like, happiness, a real sense of community there. And what I see now is empty storefronts. I see gentrification desecrating the neighborhood, and this has got to stop. I am not familiar with a lot of the zoning, but I do stand with anybody who supports the low-income residents, the seniors who have lived there for, like, decades, low social housing, things that -- and I would like to see, like, all those storefronts be given back to the community, like the mom-and-pop stores that my family used to shop at when I was, like, as little as six years old. It's just so sad, walking in Chinatown, all the storefronts being empty. It's heartbreaking. And I would like for, like, I really believe that, like, I keep hearing, there's a housing crisis. We need to address the housing crisis. Well, I am really starting to believe that this housing crisis doesn't give anyone a right to level the whole neighborhood of Chinatown, which is what I am seeing there. It's like, like, not just the stores on Pender and those areas. It's like, when you walk under that monument, all, everything, it's like, it's like one big tourist attraction. There's no community there anymore, and it's heartbreaking. And I would like to sit in agreement with what Jean Swanson has said. I agree with everything she's mentioned. I think it's really important that we give Chinatown back to the people who have lived there. They deserve, they deserve to have their community. Thanks.
Okay, thanks very much for coming tonight. And next up is Kelly Taleko, followed by 16, Vincent Fodera.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am Kelly Taleko, and I am speaking as an individual. I'm not affiliated with any group. I've lived in Vancouver for 40 years, and I care about its history and about its vitality today and into the future. I am speaking in support of the amendments proposed here tonight. As the chief planner's June 22 report and Ms. Ma's introduction both summarized, the rezoning policy enacted in 2011 did not achieve what was expected. Instead, it led to rapid rate of development and increase in property values beyond the citywide average, speculative activities, and community concern about the changing Chinatown environment. With tonight's proposal, the city has another chance to get it right. And maybe this will be its last chance. In my view, these amendments should be approved with two changes. One, we need to retain the distinctive look of Chinatown buildings. Therefore, lot widths should be a maximum of 25 feet or the width that exists now. Second, we need to retain affordable housing where it exists in the area and to prioritize social housing. Therefore, dwelling use should be conditional unless 100% social housing is proposed. I live in East Vancouver, very close to Kingsway. My neighborhood has changed dramatically since we moved there 40 years ago, just as it had then changed massively in the preceding years. In another 10 years, it will be unrecognizable. Well, that seems to be inevitable as Vancouver grows, and it's a logical direction for development and density. Some hints remain of what was once there. Almost every day, I walk by a large inscribed stone telling the story of Kingsway as the route once of North America's first true electric interurban streetcar line, which took passengers from Vancouver to New West in one hour and 10 minutes. Mayor and council, I urge you to act tonight to ensure that revitalization of Chinatown proceeds at a measured pace in a sensitive and monitored fashion. Otherwise, we might someday need another inscribed stone on a sidewalk. Maybe this would be at the corner of Main and Pender saying, "Here was once Vancouver's Chinatown." Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Councillor Louis, did you have a question? Ms. Taleko, do you have a question?
I was here earlier this week, and I thought you guys were sick of me.
A question from councillor Louis.
Oh, no. Not, never, never sick. Just interested in your comments to us in regards to two things. One was 25-foot widths of the properties for development except what's already existing there.
If there was already a property parcel that was wider than 25 feet.
And it could be redeveloped to that same width.
Yes, that would be my --
It was 100 feet. You'd be okay with redeveloping another 100-foot-wide building? Is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
If, if someone now owns a parcel larger than 25 feet in width, then, yeah. I mean, what, what would the only alternative would be to appropriate it or whatever?
Force them to break it up.
Yeah.
Good.
No.
Okay. Second was, no housing unless it's social housing. And how would that be funded?
No, I said that the, the use should be conditional unless an applicant has applied to build 100% social housing.
Okay, so no housing, housing be conditional unless it be 100% social housing. Is that right? And so if they didn't apply for any housing, then it'd be just commercial retail. Is that?
I, perhaps I'm displaying my ignorance about what conditional would mean. What I assumed was that if an application for development came in and it was for 100% social housing, then there would be, they had met a requirement that would not have to be tested in whatever ways development applications are tested. If it, if it's for less than 100% social housing, say it's for 10% social housing and 90% market housing in the residential portion, then it, then it doesn't just automatically get checked in the box next to residents.
So it would be allowed under your framework, but just that it wouldn't receive an automatic pass?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you. And next up is 16, Vincent Fodera, followed by 17, Emily Howard.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Vincent Fodera, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak as a council and in this unceded Squamish nation territory. I'm Vincent Fodera, the owner of the Jimi Hendrix Shrine, probably you all heard about. I've been kind of hanging on a limbo for the last three years due to this back-and-forth rezoning of Chinatown, and putting back down again and up again. And however, I'm involved with the development a little bit regarding the people that purchased the place. And the statue is waiting in Italy to be shipped in Canada of Jimi Hendrix. So, and the planning department is taking a long time to give permission to the developer to build what the original, they were intended to build, which their previous rezoning gave a kind of assurance that what they want to do was going to be happening. So I am against this downzoning again, back and forth after it was done in 2001. It was 2010, and now again, want to change again. This is like, okay, you go council that has a sport car, runs at 300 miles an hour, and you have, oop, sorry. And you have a planning department that is like an old truck with the flat wheels and a broken gear that can't keep up with council. The council keep rezoning and create all this enthusiasm. People make money, speculators, people get fast, rich. And now they're kind of back and forth. It is a dilemma for me. I don't want to speak for the Chinatown, which I know very well since 2001, when I bought my first rundown building, Condam, the hotel, which together with a few more, they were all condemned. Chinatown was so rundown, porch falling down, roof falling, dilapidated houses. There are a few houses in Strathcona and Chinatown. There were punk rock bands living on Union Street and Gore, DOA, living there and playing music late at night, and we could hear all the way to the Vida. So anyway, Chinatown has improved a lot since this rezoning has approved, has been approved. And I like the council to stick with it and get things, and get the planning department to work and work as fast as the council is doing. I appreciate the council is very good in approving all those things, which I support. But have, hire more people at the planning department to follow up with your decision. You can't have a two-way kind of system that one is, yeah, do, do, and the other one, no, stop, stop. So I'm against this process of downsizing back again because it will create more bureaucracy. And Vancouver is already famous for bureaucracy, which discourage a lot of investors and people that create business in this city. In Chinatown, what I want -- In Chinatown, what I wanna say, because I, I built quite a few, not big, I renovated a few places in Chinatown. What Chinatown needed at first was not a rezoning. Now it's too late. It needed change of building codes that people were afraid to pick up old building and fix it up because as soon as you, you start to do some work, it was like a whole headache, discouraged young people. I've been through a few of those adventures. I'm glad I'm over. I'm almost retired, so, but I, I hope the city can change the building code as well and go ahead with this existing rezoning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for being here tonight. No questions for you. And next speaker is Emily Howard. Is Emily Howard here? Emily Howard not here. Okay. Speaker eighteen Derek Lee is here, followed by Joan Pottinger.
Thank you, Your Worship and City Council. My, thank you. My name is Derek Lee and I've been attached to Chinatown since I was a little boy. Um, and I remember helping my family rebuild the one-twenty-seventh East Pender after it burned down. Uh, since then, Chinatown has been a very big part of my life, my family's life. We've invested in several properties there over the years, and I currently manage three properties. So I do have a little bit of experience of how, um, the, the market is viewing space in Chinatown. I've witnessed firsthand the positives and negatives of civic policies on the community and believe without modifications to these latest downsizing recommendations, it could lead to the eventual extinction of Chinatown as we know it. Chinatown Voices, of which I am a member, is a group with a long history in Chinatown, and we've advanced recommendations we feel are reasonable and will lead to the rebirth and the economic viability of Chinatown. For Chinatown to thrive, we need more people living, shopping and doing business there, as we've heard from other speakers. Yes, Chinatown's ethnic makeup is broadening, but that will only increase its vitality. All the leasing, however, I've done in the past decade is basically with non-Chinese businesses. This isn't by choice, this is by necessity, because I have to keep those buildings full in order to pay the city their property taxes. I want to lease to Chinese stores, but I can't. None have come down to offer to lease to me. I would definitely pick them over anyone else. They would have an advantage, but none have come down. I take four-seventy-five Main Street as a good example of how, at one point when we first bought the, the store, uh, seventeen years ago, there was a great furniture curio store in the ground floor and on, on the, on the main floor. And after about nine years of struggling to pay the rent, constantly in arrears, they finally moved out in two thousand and eleven. And I could not find another tenant to take their space. Otherwise, it'd be, um, a serious deficit. So we did put two sort of non-traditional Chinese stores into those spaces, and it's worked out very well. And, um, it's actually enabled me to hold off on renting some spaces to maybe some other even more questionable tenants closer to where the Carnegie Library is. So, um, that has been, that particular space has actually been vacant for now well over two years. And I'm getting lots of offers from convenience stores or vape shops, but I know that I cannot do that in order that the, uh, you know, the, sort of the negative influences of the Carnegie Library and the downtown east side is gonna move further into Chinatown. Vandalism is affecting all our stores and storefronts throughout the community. And we're now having to put up metal bars everywhere we can to keep people from sleeping and from, uh, selling goods. So how do we overcome this rot? We need a strong economic Chinatown. That's the only way we can stop, um, a, a negative influence from impacting on Chinatown. And now we are even seeing people selling things on the sidewalks and general lawlessness that, that looks, seems to rule on Hastings Street is now closing on Chinatown. We appreciate the efforts of the Vancouver Police, but there's no way that they have the resources to handle the, um, the negatives that are, that are flooding in. We need to flood Chinatown with good people to push the battle on South. Anything that discourages development and change, I'm against. It was a travesty that the BD development was turned down because it was a lost opportunity to bring more good people into Chinatown, some of whom may have been Chinese, but some may have not. The current policies developed in two thousand and twelve were put in place for that reason, and they have worked. I like these policies and the new buildings that were added to the area's slow rebirth. And yes, over time, the Chinese businesses will come back, but they won't come back under the circumstances that are there today. If council feels compelled to make changes, I would encourage, seriously encourage you to, to consider the ones that we've, um, suggested. We need the height in order to encourage development on the ground floor retail to give retailers a chance. Um, we need the height also to allow for setbacks, so the buildings don't have to be so bulky and, and short and squat. So I would recommend that the cities go to seventy-five feet and ninety feet outright in the HA one and, and the HA one A district. The bulk and shape of the buildings can be easily controlled by the policies that will be, um, considered by council. Um, the parking, we've already discussed. I think that is a, is a very good suggestion. And again, there should be no requirement for offices as that, that makes it very difficult to, um, to manage building, to manage your space on a small building. We can keep the feel of Chinatown through imaginative architecture that a gain would be paid for with higher density. Encourage carefully to organize development.
Mr. Lee, you're, you're over your time.
Vibrancy back to the jewel of the city. Thank you.
Okay, you have questions from Counselor Jiang.
Good to see you, Mr. Lee. I was intrigued by your comment. Can you define for me what a good person is?
I think a person who would, who would consider Chinatown to be their community, who would be shopping, who would be, um, who would be frequenting the businesses in Chinatown in a positive fashion. I would say that would be a good person for the community.
So what does it mean by interacting in a positive fashion?
I would say, I would say frequenting the stores there.
So people who are... Does it matter then if an addict from the downtown east side shops in Chinatown? Is that a good person or a bad person?
If he shops in the stores, I would say that would be a good person.
Okay.
And, and I, I've witnessed firsthand how there could be a lot of profanity and other things that come out from people that could possibly be shopping in, in stores there.
What's a bad person then?
I would say people that would make a negative impression on the area.
So somebody who's poor, uh, is, is living in poverty, but still considers Chinatown part of their community, tries to shop there, buying what they can. Is that a good person or a bad person?
You have a point of order, Counsel, Counsel Rafflick?
I just wanna clarify, speakers, on that they don't have to answer questions if they're not comfortable with what kind of questions that they're being asked.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out. It's not a point of order, but...
It's up to you to answer if you wish, but I'm trying to understand how you classify people as good or bad in Chinatown. And so far, it seems to me that anybody who's in, from what you've just answered, anybody's good as long as they spend money. But I just don't understand how you can classify people as good or bad. Is it people who have money because they can afford the new developments you're after, so they're better? But then in my experience, people who are in some of these expensive condos, they're just as addicted and they just have many other psychiatric and psychological problems as someone who's living on the street. I'm just trying to understand how you're trying to make that distinction to somebody who's good and bad. You don't have to answer if you don't want, but that's what I'm trying to understand.
I don't really understand the, the, I, I think that we all understand that the city, I think, would like a vibrant area, an area where the tenants in the area can pay their rent. And I don't think that's happening right now. It's evident over and over, all up and down. All the Chinese stores are closing as we speak. Uh, if we let it continue onwards, there's even gonna be fewer five years from now. So I think what we need to do is we need to flood, we need to flood the area possibly with people who will frequent and be able to revitalize the businesses if they choose to go down there. And I think a lot of the Chinese businesses are not in that camp right now. I think people like maybe some coffee shops and some of the more, the vegan restaurants are all, they're willing to take that chance. So those stores will maybe be the transition stores until Chinatown is strong again. And then, once that happens, you might find the Chinese stores willing to make, make, try it out again down there. But right now, like I said, in ten years, I've yet to have a Chinese retailer ask me to rent space in Chinatown. So I don't know whether that's because Richmond is now the new, new spot or, um, parking is more convenient down there. I, I don't know. But I would say the negative elements are as strong, as a, as a stronger reason as the fact that there are more positives in these other locations.
Okay, I'm gonna leave that. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor DeGenova, questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. I understand that you said that, um, this, uh, this plan, you, you were fairly supportive of what staff, um, is recommending here.
Yep.
Not going, I'm, I'm not going to interrogate you. I will, however, ask the question, uh, that I get asked and that I hear when we're here to consider projects in Chinatown, which is, um, especially the low-income seniors. Uh, the low-income individuals who lived in Chinatown, who grew up in Chinatown, who wanna continue to contribute to the Chinatown community. With less housing, um, that, I mean, the numbers become more expensive on a pro forma. The, the rents become more expensive. And we've heard from seniors here before and family members who have said that seniors are living off of, you know, a head of lettuce and a package of gelatin because they wanna continue to live in Chinatown. So I'm, I'm asking how, how do, how do we balance that to make sure there's more housing? But at the same time, this plan's asking us, uh, to, to really consider changing that, changing the projects, the projects similar to those that we've recently approved. Do you, do you believe that more housing and more density will help to make it more affordable in Chinatown or not?
Well, definitely if there is more density, you have a better chance of getting some social housing. There's a better chance. If there's less housing, you're probably not gonna get any social housing. Uh, the second point is that, um, I think this, I've yet to hear any social housing get torn down. I think some have been renovated. So I think the people that are there, um, are still there for the most part. And I think a lot of the people who are there, who can get out of there and move to Richmond or some other places are probably moving if they can. If, like, there's no real reason, um, to stay there if you're, if, if it's, uh, you know, if you, if you need a certain type of housing. I mean, there's housing, social housing available two blocks away. My mother-in-law was in a social housing project, maybe three blocks out of Chinatown. It's close enough, but not right in the heart of Chinatown, so you can walk there. But I think that, again, back to the issue of whether housing can be created, it definitely has a better chance if you've got a bigger building. It's just logic. So...
What about, um, perhaps not social housing, but housing that's been more affordable? So when I look at the actual definitions of social housing or non-market housing, you know, there's the people who have three hundred and seventy-five to four hundred and twenty-five dollars a month to live on. But then there's those people that don't quite fit that, so they fall into the category of they have to try and make market rent. And some of those buildings perhaps are aging. And when, when buildings are past their lifespan, um, often we'll deal with, uh, site here and someone wanting to redevelop and, you know, the most affordable housing is the housing you build today for tomorrow. Now, I understand that, that there's heritage considerations.
Question, Counselor DeGenova?
I'm getting there, Mr. Mayor.
You just need to be...
I'm more than happy to time other counselors' questions and preambles. Um, I...
Please ask your question.
I, I'm asking, do you think that those people who don't fall necessarily in social housing, should they be displaced? Should only the very, very rich and the very, very poor be able to live in Chinatown? Or should we have housing for those people too?
Most definitely. There should be housing for that middle section. I mean, that's as important as anything. I mean, who's gonna, you know, we've heard it all before. You need people to be running the restaurants, um, the, you know, the running transportation, busboys. All those different jobs are so important to the lifeblood of the city. And when we lose that, the city loses a big component of why we all are here in the first place. So yes, we need housing for that middle class, the middle section, if you wanna call it. And, um, but again, I would go back to the same point. The bigger the building, the more housing you can put in it, the more affordable everything becomes. Let's not limit the size. Let's, let's stretch it out a little bit. And, um, and then you'll have more chance of variety of, of housing types.
Okay, and the shops, like, we saw the video with Dollar Meets. Do you feel that this plan will in any way, um, make it less affordable for the shops?
No, I, I don't think it'll make it less affordable. The city taxes have been going up tremendously, which we all know. Um, that, that is a large component. My rents have generally stayed the same. It's the, the only component that's gone up is the taxes. Um, so, uh, that makes it very difficult for these tenants to stay in business. But I think, I think we, we need to look at it from the perspective of let's get those people, those businesses, more people that they, that will shop in their stores and then they can afford to pay those taxes, which is how I started.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Louis, questions?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Lee, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
I'll try to keep my questions short and hopefully you'll have more, longer answers for me. The, there's two pieces that you spoke of. One, one is the, the height. Uh, you'd rather the height, if, if anything, be higher. Uh, but you can be sounded as if you would accept, um, a certain level of height if they're outright, both seventy-five in HA one and ninety in HA one A. Is that, did I hear you correctly?
That's, that's correct. I mean, you know, for the extra fifteen or twenty feet, we saw the, the, um, the very tough, um, position that BD was put in to get, you know, what he got. He, he went for a lot more than that. So who's gonna go for an extra fifteen feet under the same scenario when you, when, so you'll just probably, most people will develop just to the shorter height, which I don't, I think that's a mistake, because I think we need the height in order to make everything work better. So if the height is what everybody can live with, the seventy-five, the ninety feet, that seem to be in, okay with, you know, both sides of the equation, let's just make that an outright height and not make it conditional.
Okay, it was intend...
Outright.
So your, your concept is that you're intending that, uh, to avoid that type of process?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Avoid the process. So, um, the Main Street developments to a hundred and fifty feet, they've been pointed at as an example of how it's bad for the, the character of Chinatown. And, and but what I've been hearing you say is that higher heights allow for all these positive things to happen as well. And so is there an opinion that you have on those Main Street developments?
I, I really like the, I like the look of them. I, like, as soon as I went in, I, I thought they looked great. And I think they've brought vibrancy to the area. I've noticed even when I'm renting, yeah, they're non-Chinese, but at least I've got people that are interested in renting. When those, when those two buildings went in, or the three, that, uh, that really helped and it really helped the area around Kiefer Street. Um, you know, you've got some great, you've got some great bases on Kiefer Street with Baobai and with, um, you know, the, uh, some other restaurants, the Juke and, yeah, they're, they're not Chinese restaurants, but they bring people there. So I'm, I'm, I think they're great.
So you're, you're less concerned about the character, more concerned about economic of, of the area in general?
I think the, the, yes, I think the character of the buildings could be, um, that could be design. That's design guidelines. And eventually, I think, once, you know, this is known in Chinatown. The Chinese stores will come back if there's a reason for them to come back. And maybe at some point in the future, they're all fighting to get space in there and they'll outbid the, the guys that are, that are there, you know? I think that, I'd, I would love to see that at some point.
One of the unique features of Chinatown is its sawtooth character on the storefronts. How do you achieve that with an outright ninety feet? And without some discretion between the seventy-five and the ninety outright, or seventy-five outright and ninety discretionary?
I, I think that you've got a lot of heritage buildings that are just automatically not gonna be developed, uh, that are already, you know, they're in foundations, they're in, um, the associations. Some are owned by, you know, so... in associations, some are owned by, you know, so there's, there's very little chance. In fact, I wish the city came up with the plans of how many sites can be assembled down there. I don't think there's that many. Most of them are broken up. And there's the few that, that are large enough that give that retail flexibility and variety that you need down there. You might need a, a major Chinese department store to go down there to make the whole thing, you know, to draw people. Like, there's this big Chinese department store in New York that, that, you know, if that could move over to Vancouver, then that might be a good thing. But how are they going to, how are they going to fit in a 25-foot or 50-foot building? So you need big spaces for different retailers. And what you do is maybe you break up the front like London Drugs did on Robson Street. They've got a, you know, a little entry, and then they've got, you know, a bunch of, of stores in the front. In fact, even as a developer, you'd do that. That's a design thing that a developer would be happy to do because he gets more rent for every square foot of frontage. And then, like, a London Drugs doesn't need all the, all that frontage. It would be all wasted space.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all your questions. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And Joan Pottinger is next. Speaker number 19, followed by Speaker number 20, Hain Wei.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Good evening.
My comments tonight are not technical, they're general. I'm here as an individual, as a property owner in Chinatown South. But I felt very compelled to voice my opinion because I, I really believe that some of these amendments, particularly the effective downzoning of Chinatown South, is misguided. I really think it's off-base. And my story starts with my electrician son's purchase of his first home about five years ago in what I thought, I have to admit, was in a sort of a dying, almost frightening area of downtown Eastside. I have to admit, I was very apprehensive when he asked me to come down and view it and give the parental approval. And I very quickly, seriously, in one or two visits, I could see right away what was happening downtown in Chinatown. The revitalization, the energy, young people, you know, bicyclists, cycling lanes, everybody moving around, and people eating all sorts of new restaurants. And our family life changed. Instead of him coming our way and eating where we were, entertaining and doing things, I was going his way. And we would eat downtown and then just walk to the Canucks Games or any other entertainment we were doing downtown. And, and I could really see, and when you look at it, you could see what's happening since that policy was adopted in 2011, 2012, both areas of those, those policies. You just see young people there, people moving there, working, people walking their dogs. It was just a whole different place than the Chinatown I stopped going to. You know, I moved here 40 years ago, it was all fun. You went down for meals, you brought friends there and tourists there. And I bet I hadn't been there in two decades. You know, it was just a place, you didn't go anymore. And so I think that the city made the right decisions five, six years ago when they went ahead with this revitalization policy. And I just really feel that to change the policy in the ways that we are looking at, especially with getting rid of things like removal of all outright residential zoning, all sorts of things that are inherent in the proposal we saw tonight, I agreed with what had happened, your analysis of what had happened and the revitalizations that was happening. Why would you throw out the baby with the bathwater? Why would you reverse what seems to be a successful course of activity? So I, I know that the design considerations and all the things that we cherish about Chinatown need to be taken into consideration, but those were the three pillars of that initial policy when we were revitalizing. So I, I'm just really afraid that you're going to take a 45-acre tract of land when you're talking about only social housing being approved or, or just seniors housing, that this is just going to be, and I'm sad to say, it will be part of the problems that were there. We, we need diversity, we need a whole variety of people, and we need diversity of what, of what it looks like and the people it will attract. I hate to see it being halted in its tracks. And I honestly think that expression about things going south, I think that all the energy could be sucked out of this area, south, when you're looking at the whole development of northeast Falls Creek. It borders right on Union Street, which is where our, where our investment is now. And, you know, falling along in my son's footsteps. I, I just think that everything's going to go south, and, and north of Union is just going to be, I, I just can't imagine what it would look like. And, and I really, I really urge you, especially also in light of the fact that we need housing. I mean, it's been said by other speakers, I won't go into it at length, but we're in a housing crisis, and we're talking about downzoning an area that's so close to downtown. I just think, you know, I think Speaker number two this evening spoke as a millennial like my son, who just is looking and needs and wants opportunities for housing, to be able to get into housing, into multifamily housing. So I guess what I'm just saying is I would really urge Council to do what I think that you're elected to do, and that is to make rational decisions in the best interests of the city, to weigh it all. And I really urge you to find a different way to support businesses and citizens who've already contributed to the planning. It was a decade in planning when that policy was adopted. And I think that you really need to honor those people and businesses that we've heard from tonight who have contributed to this plan and, and not take away the ability for people to continue to contribute in the future. So I think you have to respect the heritage values that we all treasure and cherish as part of our Chinatown, but I urge you to find a different compromise than what the Planning Department has recommended. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for being here tonight. Speaker number 20 is next. Hain Wei, and followed by Janice Wong, 21.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Hain Wei. I've been involved in Chinatown's strathcona issues, planning issues, for the last 40-plus years. I'm a past board member of the Chinese Culture Centre, the Dr. Senyat Sen Board, Gordon, and the Chinese-Canadian Historical Society, B.C. And more recently, I was a member of the City Advisory Group that looked at the historic discrimination against Chinese people. I have a strong interest in Chinatown's evolution for many years, and I am speaking in favor of the proposed amendments. In 2011, the city hired an economic consultant to look at the economic revitalization plan for Chinatown. The team interviewed 80 key stakeholders in Chinatown. A major session was held at Flota, June 29th, 2011. 250 people attended. Consultant began his remarks on Chinatown's economic future from what he had heard repeatedly in his consultations. The status quo is not sustainable. Chinatown needed initiatives to counter the economic downturn. The status quo is not sustainable. It was at the same time that the city completed months of consultation on the Chinatown Historic Height Review to consider amending zoning for Chinatown's revitalization. This height review followed upon a proposal for a 30-story high-rise in Chinatown at the Chinese Culture Centre's site. There was very strong community backlash against a 30-story tower. The city approved the historic review, and that allowed for increased heights in Chinatown. This was viewed as a compromise by the Chinatown community. There was consensus and hope that this would stimulate Chinatown revitalization. Now, several years later, what do we have? Definitely not the results of what had been envisaged, but rather tall, large developments which are not congruent with Chinatown's historic character. This includes two towering high-rises, Kiefer and Main, total of 215 market condos. And there could have been another 135 units at 105 Kiefer, but council declined that application. These buildings with their large storefronts and walled designs are not compatible with Chinese, Chinatown's character. They just, they greatly disrupt the sense of community fabric. The current zoning has not worked well for Chinatown. We could lose Chinatown for all that it means to the community and to the city. Recent years, Chinatown stores have exited Chinatown, Chinese stores. According to last year's report by the Wau Foundation, traditional Chinatown stores have been lost at alarming rate. 50% of Chinatown's fresh food stores, green groceries, fishmongers, barbecue meat shops were lost between 2009 and 2016. The new zoning proposals before council are a result of numerous consultations by city staff. There is now a better appreciation of Chinatown's unique cultural assets and was required to go forward. Chinatown needs development, but this development should not result in the exodus of its most valuable heritage, culture, and history. It should facilitate new businesses and, which enhance Chinatown's history. Chinatown needs development, mixed development, including social and seniors housing, to bring back community members and to balance new market housing. Chinatown needs development, smart and quality development, with culturally relevant designs which reflect its cultural heritage. Buildings designed for other parts of the city are not necessarily appropriate for Chinatown. As I mentioned at the beginning, I served on the City Advisory Committee, which reviewed historic discrimination against people of Chinese descent in Vancouver, but only up until 1947. That was the time limit. It didn't have a chance to look at the urban renewal and the Chinatown freeway threats against Chinatown of the 1960s and 70s. The report recommended not only an apology for past institutional and legal discrimination, but positive community legacy initiatives to facilitate Chinatown's evolution, the city's recent establishment of a transformation team, its preparation for UNESCO application, and the proposed zoning amendments will definitely enhance Chinatown's future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wei, for being here. And our next speaker is Janice Wong, followed by Speaker 22, Louis LaPron. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Janice Wong. I'm fourth-generation Chinese-Canadian, a visual artist, writer, and Vancouver resident since 1986. I value the historic, cultural, and built heritage of Chinatown, and as an involved community member, I am concerned about Chinatown's future. I'm here to support the new Chinatown zoning proposal, and I want to thank city staff for the public information meetings, the ample consultation, documentation, and all of their work to bring this new zoning proposal to public hearing. In light of the council-supported UNESCO bid, this zoning proposal dovetailed with the new Chinatown transformation team is a step in the right direction. It acknowledges Chinatown's current position as national historic site and provides an initial framework for serious stewardship towards a successful UNESCO bid. It's also an initial step towards supporting a community in transition. Over the past six years, the existing zoning has proved to negatively impact the established community with escalating speculation, ballooning land values, taxes, and rents. The pressure on the community has been alarming, exemplified in the Hua Foundation's statistics on the loss of culturally appropriate food assets. I hope we can all agree that Chinatown families and seniors need a supportive, affordable, consistent, and vibrant neighborhood. And I believe the new zoning policy moves closer to facilitating this than the existing zoning. I believe that affordability is the key to enabling the community to survive and flourish. Affordability will keep families in place and encourage new families to choose the neighborhood. Affordability will also encourage and retain small businesses. I hope the council will approve the new zoning policies and, with affordability in mind, request that staff enhance the protections for existing affordable housing, prioritizing social housing, making dwelling use conditional unless the development is for 100% social housing. I also ask for amendments to prevent out-of-scale buildings and lot assemblies by setting outright lot widths to match Chinatown's median 25-foot frontages. The Chinatown Transformation Team is a valuable asset, and I hope that staff will enlist them to help refine zoning policy so that all initiatives in Chinatown will hold a balance between heritage, development, access, and affordability. Vancouver's heritage neighborhoods are rare, and of the few that exist, Chinatown has a singular history, one of resilience and resistance with a deep cultural history that has uniquely played out in our Canadian multicultural landscape. Its history and heritage evolved with the city to become something that all Vancouverites share. While our Chinatown developed in tandem with others across North America, ours is unique to Vancouver. Chinatown's very existence as a, as a strong element in our city's multicultural fabric is something that's really special, really rare, and so worth protecting. I recently read about the three elements used to describe historic heritage. They are fabric, which is the physical remains that exist today, that which you can see and touch, and stories and culture. All of these, in context together, make up the historic heritage of a place. As we erode our heritage in order to build ever more unaffordable neighborhoods, we lose a part of our city's collective soul. To this end, the new zoning policy, with its acknowledgement of Chinatown's history and existing structures, will enable the community to move more sensitively towards its future form. I believe that heritage neighborhoods should be developed differently than other neighborhoods. I believe it's acceptable and preferable to implement unique policies for heritage development, and I'd like to say that I live in a city that's progressive enough to take such a stance. Last week, I came across a quote about a new children's book about Jane Jacobs, and it reads, "The story ends with Jane Jacobs' move from New York to Toronto, where she continues modeling the civic courage by which communities stand up for themselves and continue inspiring generations to walk wakefully through their cities, to listen, linger, and think about what they saw." Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. Next speaker, Louis LaPron, followed by 23, Kay Higgins.
Good evening. I will try to keep things short. I support the proposed plan. Here's why. My name is Louis LaPron. I'm the president of Chinatown Today Society, a nonprofit dedicated to promoting Chinatown by sharing information and organizing public events. I've been living and working in the neighborhood since 2012.
Louis, could you shift over to the mic a little closer?
Sorry. Oh, here we go. I've been living and working in the neighborhood since 2012. I try to support the community in every way I can. I've been paying very close attention to the problematic changes in Chinatown over the last few years, to the point where maybe it's not entirely healthy for me. I strongly disagreed with the earlier version of the zoning plan because it would allow massive lots, lot consolidation and did not do anything for affordable housing in the neighborhood. In my view, that plan would have made matters worse. At the time, I even suspected city staff was working to maximize the profits of real estate development companies. Over time, I realized that staff was actually consulting with us, trying to work with the community to design a plan that would help Chinatown while respecting the constraints they were bound by. The new version of the plan is not perfect. It still allows lot consolidation that would be out of line with the character of Chinatown. It does not do anything to add much-needed social housing all over Chinatown. I believe we can address that in the next version of the plan, which should start, we should start, which we, sorry, which we should start working on as soon as possible. Meanwhile, I urge you to approve this plan. It's a good first step towards protecting Chinatown. We cannot wait for the perfect plan because there may not be any Chinatown left by the plan, by the time we find something we all agree on. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for being here. And 23, Kay Higgins is next, followed by 24, Nicholas Young. Is Kay Higgins here? Kay Higgins not here. Nicholas Young? Is Nicholas Young here? Not here. So 25 is Chris Karu. Chris Karu here. Not here. Doug Halverson. Next speaker, 26, followed by Ann Lamb. Good evening.
Good evening. Let's see now. I've forgotten the routine. Oh, no, that's on?
That's it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Robertson and councilors. I've spent eight years, no, no, 10 years coming to meetings vaguely around this, or to hearings around this topic, and I want to add my support tonight for the amendment before you. We started down this road in 2008, and Hain Wei mentioned the 30-story tower at the CCC. As president of Senyat Sen Garden at the time, that got me into the, into the boil, and I have been involved ever since. I probably would have been home tending my own garden if this hadn't happened, and I would be so tranquil, I'd be boring. The package of materials that Ms. Wong provided earlier and that you have in print form covers the history really well. I read it last night, and I think it captures very well what we've been through. And as I often say, it's natural for a community, as old as... And as I often say, it’s natural for a community, as old as Chinatown and a city with as much happening in as this, to have lots of different voices. And we sort of turn to the city finally to sort through them all and find some way to get a solution that’s fair and yet meets the objectives of the community. You’ve heard from individuals tonight who would only incentivize social housing. I’ve read a letter that you received that wanted no social housing. You’ve heard from some who’d give privacy to accommodating St. Paul’s Hospital forces and others who’d give primacy to the living heritage value of Chinatown. And council long ago agreed on that last one, and we heard today again from Ms. Ma that there’s a Chinatown transformation team that’s now been formed to pursue that goal. And I am most concerned that these zoning amendments not get stalled now so that that team is not able to get on with this work. So I think the bylaw you have before you now is the best way of finding a path between all the desires that you’ve heard. It reflects the painful lessons they gained from 2011. It reflects the thousands of person-hours that staff and volunteers and citizens have put into the project. And I’ve heard several people insinuate at least that they didn’t have a chance to get involved in the discussion that led to the amendments you’re looking at today, and that, to me, seems absurd. They’ve gone on for three years, and I don’t know how many years it takes to get your voice heard. So that’s about it. I think it would be quite an insult to reason and good planning practice to not just get on with this right now. And I hope, actually, I don’t ever have to come to a hearing on this, and I know some of you won’t ever have to too. But we’ve sort of grown a decade older together going through it. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. And next speaker, Anne Lamb. Speaker 27, followed by Melody Ma.
Dear Mayor and Council, my name is Anne Lamb. I’m just a citizen, but I’m a Canadian history and heritage architecture enthusiast. I’m for the recommendation but have two amendments to request for your consideration. First amendment to request, limit outright development lot width to 25 feet or existing lot size. Second amendment to request, limit outright development maximum height above ground level to 50 feet equivalent to five-story or existing building heights, especially on historic Pender Street. This request shares the same rationale. Chinatown is small compared with other neighborhoods, but its presence is significant in history and has numerous beautiful architecture which make this neighborhood unique. It is designated as National Historic Site, and Vancouver City is working towards a UNESCO Heritage Destination Application. But going without the proposed zoning policy and the requested amendment, is there anything left in Chinatown by the time the application is concluded? Guide by the standard and guideline for conservation of historic places in Canada, second edition published in 2010, which enabled conservation and redevelopment projects to give historic places new life while protect their heritage value. Anyone carrying out an intervention at a historic place must be mindful of its overall heritage value, using the documented character-defining elements as a starting point and guide. According to the Conservation Decision Making, intervening through projects or maintenance that results in a physical change to its character-defining elements must respect and protect its heritage value. If new development has lot size wider or building height taller than average in Chinatown historic sites, it would violate the conservation standard, and this practice would destroy this physical integrity of the fragile element in Chinatown. In Shanghai Alley and Canton Alley, we already lost part of the heritage to the high-rise condo. Last but not least, limitation for lot width and height maximum could enable a smooth skyline and landscape from Chinatown all the way through Crosstown to historic West Pender and Hamilton Block. In West Pender and Hamilton Block, we have 300 West Pender, Macbeth and Campbell Building, B.C. Permanent Building, Victoria Block, and at the back, they have a more than 30-story high B.C. Hydro Building. And the Crosstown notable landmark is Sun Tower, which used to be the tallest architecture in British Empire. And along the BT Street, there’s a row of heritage high-rise boutique loft conversion. Both sites are preserved without tearing down anything or a physical change to a character-defining element. That’s my rationale for the two requests. You see, the PowerPoint is coming up in a bit too late, so I apologize for this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You have a question from Councilor Louis. Ms. Lamb?
I thought I could run away from you.
Ms. Lamb, you had proposed a number of amendments.
Just two.
And so without those amendments, I want to hear whether or not you’re in favor of the recommendations from staff, or are you opposed?
My first sentence say I’m for the recommendation.
Okay. Because it wasn’t clear.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I’m number 24 Nicholas Young. Sorry, I was with the seniors. I took some time to walk you.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, yep. We missed you.
Don’t mind if I take my one.
Yep, go ahead. We skipped over you and I saw you coming in there.
I’d like to switch with number 58 Lee Yuen. Thank you.
You’re going to switch your place with?
58 Lee Yuen, Mrs. Lee.
With 58.
不用再报名了.
Yep. Okay.
我感谢市政府
I want to thank the city. To give me this opportunity to express my request. I want the city to build 100% low-cost housing. We have been waiting for many years.
没有房子的住
Without any place to live. I want the city, I want to see the city build more affordable, low-cost housing.
我们是老年人
We are seniors. We live on welfare.
几收入的
We are low-income people. We don’t have a home to live in.
我们都是几收入的人
We are all low-income people. Yes. I have been on the Chinatown Committee for five years, and all this time, we have always asked for the city to create more affordable, low-cost housing. However, during these five years, the city has not created low-cost housing. On the contrary, it has created tall buildings. Tall buildings are okay, but you have to be able to afford it. You have to be rich to be able to live in there. We cannot afford to live in those high-rise buildings. We cannot afford to buy them either. So I urge, I plead the city to consider for the interest of us low-income people. If a city government has citizens who don’t have a home to live in, who have to live on the street A leadership that doesn’t care about the interests of its people, what kind of leadership is that? We all love and support our leaders. And we elected our mayor at the time of election. But the mayor hasn’t really cared about us who don’t have a place, a home to live in. The city will take action of our pleas and implement low-cost housing as soon as possible.
You have a question from Councilor DeGenova.
Councilor Louis was first. I’ll try and be very slow for translating. I’m wondering if you are here in support of this plan? Or against the plan?
Which plan? This plan?
The plan that’s coming to
I, no, I oppose the plan for Chinatown.
Do you think there needs to be more consideration for more housing, social housing, and just above?
Not only for low-cost, not only for low-income people, but for seniors too. You have to consider their interests.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. So, next speaker. We’re back to Melody Ma, Speaker number 28. Melody Ma here. Doesn’t look like Melody Ma is here. Speaker 30, Robert Graff. Back to you, followed by Steve Lee.
Mayor and councilors, my name is Robert Graff, and I’m a director of Pacific Crown Investment Corp. I’m here to speak out against the proposed downzoning of Chinatown, especially Chinatown South. I have 25 years’ experience providing housing in the downtown east side, plus 10 years working with a Chinese-Canadian family with very deep roots in Chinatown. We, like most property owners and businesses, recognize and respect the significance and importance of the Pender Street historical district. These buildings with their distinct architecture must be preserved. We understand this. We own a historical building on Pender Street. The goal of our company has always been to build rental apartments, functional durable units designed for the working classes. Our concern is a proposed downzoning of Chinatown South. This area was a rundown, nondescript area until the early 80s. It evolved using architecture with a slight Chinese flavor to create a Chinese business district. However, Chinatown was nevertheless abandoned by shoppers, providing that buildings and facades do not create a stable community. It is the people who live and work there. Chinatown is coming out of an extended period of extreme hardship and has finally started to improve. This economic revival is fragile, very fragile, actually. Downzoning will put such a chill in the air that the attrition rate and failure of new businesses will cascade. Specifics we disagree with regarding downzoning of Chinatown South. Maximum height, leave it as it is. This is prime land in the heart of Vancouver, on bus lines, across from the new hospital, near the business district. The height and scope of buildings planned to the immediate south and southwest on city property indicates that the city recognizes the value and significance of this area. There should be a uniform step transition to historic Pender Street. Modern Chinatown South should not be looked down upon from high rises around it like a quaint little holdover from the last century. My second point is maximum density. This must be increased well beyond the 5.35 conditional, especially on rental units. There’s, and this is for the mayor to consider, there’s nothing environmentally friendly about this downzoning. To get the maximum zoning, the building will have about twice as many outside walls, hard to heat, expensive to build. They’ll be really nice units, but very expensive. Number three is the land use. We feel that requirements for non-residential units should be reduced for all residential rental projects. The only way to affordability within the center is to allow builders to construct simple, functional, energy-efficient rental units, and lots of them. To sum up our position, the zoning changes implemented by the city in 2011 stimulated growth, and we are starting to see Chinatown come to life again. But as I said, Chinatown is delicate. It lives next to the notorious open-air Hastings Drug Market. Our back lanes are still not for the faint-hearted. To this day, Chinatown employs a private security firm. Chinatown needs much more density to survive. It cannot survive as a quaint ethnic destination. Chinatown must be treated as more than a museum or art gallery, a place to visit once or twice a year with out-of-town guests. Chinatown has earned the right to grow, to evolve into an area that will bring people back, especially the Chinese youth, to live and work in a modern, vibrant area. This will not happen with building restrictions that create a very limited number of expensive condos. Likewise, it will be condemned to mediocrity if we build too much social housing. So please, let’s not mess with a strategy that is working. Stop this regressive downzoning and give a strong voice to the workers and businesses that did not abandon Chinatown. In these days of social media, it’s easy for the message to be distorted behind the facade of clever webpages with many likes and members. Chinatown cannot succeed by replicating the past. If this downzoning goes ahead, just about finished, Mayor. If this downzoning goes ahead, our company will be forced to build a smaller number of expensive rental units catering only to the wealthy. This is not the vision, this is not what we envisioned for the future of Chinatown.
Okay. Thank you very much. And no question, Councilor DeGenova, you have a question?
It was your last sentence that made me have to ask this question. You had mentioned that with this downzoning, that you would have to build a smaller number of units, but they would be more expensive. Do you have any idea, I don’t mean to put you on the spot, you don’t have to answer my questions, as to how much more expensive those units would be?
Well, I suspect they would be a lot more expensive because being as close to the center of the city as they are and such, and just the surrounding neighborhood, and even the lot, because all of Vancouver is in a boom rate now. the square foot price has gone up exponentially all over the city. So I would suspect the only way you can get the price down is to densify it and build a uniform floor pattern.
And do you think that there's a way to densify but also to protect heritage as we've been trying to do over the past many years, as projects have come to us in Chinatown?
Well, I actually think that everything above two stories is sort of irrelevant to, especially if the top stories are set back. Because if, most people when they're walking along the street, as long as the towers are set back, they're not looking up at them. They're looking at the storefronts and maybe the second story. So I think with a setback, you could easily have the density without making the structures too imposing.
Okay, but you, you do feel from your comments, if you could confirm, what I'm hearing you say is that this ultimately will make housing more expensive in Chinatown?
Definitely will, and I think some of the property owners will just be discouraged and sit it out for a while to see what way the wind blows.
So you think we actually could see buildings that aren't kept up because they're going to wait to see?
Well, I couldn't say that, but if, I mean
Sorry, I was trying to understand that, if you could elaborate.
Well, I don't know if buildings will be neglected or whatever, but certainly there'll be a lot less enthusiasm. I mean, we've had quite a few tenants abandon our buildings the last while, and they've all been Chinese and long-term tenants. And the people that come in, they look at a couple thousand a month just for the property tax and then even a mild rent or a low rent on top of that, and they still don't want to do it. So it's, it doesn't look that positive right now.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for being here tonight. And we're on to thirty-one, Steve Lee, followed by Michael Sung. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and councilors, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Steve Lee and together with partners, I've owned a small strata retail unit over the last twenty years. I'm a member of Vancouver Voices and a strong supporter of Chinatown's heritage, history, ethnicity, embodied by all the societies, the planning department, and our critics. Where I differ with the critics and planning is I understand and I know what's necessary to keep the retail businesses viable and operating in this kind of market. And it has everything to do with new density, new residential density in this, in the Chinatown NCP. In one, in our one and only meeting with city planners Tom Wanklin and Helen Ma, Chinatown Voices had approximately forty-five attendees that made up all the business owners, store operators, and property owners in our group. There were twenty-six store operators and business people. And during this, during their question-and-answer period, I offered a very quick poll and I asked the question, whose business at this point in time is better than it was five years ago? And out of the twenty-six people, I only had a show of six hands, meaning that seventy-six percent of those retailers actually had their business decline in Chinatown over the last five years. Now, obviously, it wasn't a steep decline, otherwise they wouldn't be there. But it, for any business owner in this day and age to be in that predicament, that is a sad and dismal affair. At that point, I looked at them and I said, is there one, is there one solution to this problem? And to a person, they one-hundred percent echoed the fact that they wanted more new residents either owning or renting housing units in this market. And they, they qualified it. First, they said they wanted new homeowners and renters in these new units because just by definition of affordability, these were people that were going to be, they had the purchasing power to support these retail stores. They quickly said the second category that they wanted was the seniors, and they wanted the senior business in Chinatown. Notwithstanding, the seniors had a diminished purchasing power or even a need to purchase. But what they went on to say was when the family came down to visit, the mothers and fathers, they would often be customers of the store. And the last category that these retailers wanted was the people in the subsidized care homes and that. Simply by definition, they didn't have the buying power for the stores. While I was preparing this presentation, I did a quick analysis of the, the north side of Pender Street between Gore and Columbia and the south side of Pender Street. And that total area is approximately three hundred and fifty thousand square feet between those two streets. But let me get back to that in a minute. I was born and raised in Vancouver and I'm third-generation Vancouverite. I was born on Union Street and four years after that, my parents saved enough money to move to South Vancouver. Throughout their business careers, they always worked and had offices in Chinatown. I remember the heydays of the fifties in Chinatown as the old Chinatown as we knew it was the cultural and retail core of our population. And in that time, the larger and exclusive restaurants such as WK Gardens, Ming's, and Marco Polo were the house and home for all of the large family celebrations, weddings, and what have you. That, at that point in time, Pender Street was the core of the community. And then in the sixties, two things happened that changed a lot of that. In, in the early sixties, two new restaurants opened up, one on West Broadway and another one on South Camby Street. And they also had the same large facilities that these other restaurants on Pender Street had. Then all of a sudden, Pender Street had some real hard competition. Competition that was closer to the marketplace because many of the people had moved to South Vancouver. People, these locations had more and, more abundant and more convenient parking. And, and lastly, the, where am I?
Mr. Lee, you're, you're well over time.
Oh, am I?
You are, but you have some questions.
Okay.
Councilor Carr has some questions for you.
I want to, I want to summarize it this way.
You're okay with summarizing, Councilor Carr?
Yes, fine. Go ahead.
Okay, we need to, we need to, the one and only solution to the retail, the retail problem in Chinatown is the population. We need planning and the city to reconsider this new plan and carefully examine what's going on and how we can increase the retail sales in Chinatown. Without a successful retail component in this market, all of these other conversations about it being a culturally attractive area and have all the ambience that it had in the old days is all going to be gone.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lee, Councilor Carr, your questions?
I actually have some questions, yeah, thanks very much. So you talked about doing that survey, six out of twenty-six retailers doing better than, only six out of twenty-six were doing better than before. What was that time period? I missed it when you said, like, over what period of time?
Over five years.
Over five years, over the last five years, okay. And where were they located? Like, was there a very specific?
They were, they were primarily between Gore and the first half block of Pender Street West.
Gore and Pender, okay. And I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. Did you say that when you were talking about the kinds of residents that they want, that they, they don't want social housing because the residents of social housing don't have buying power?
They said, yeah, that, they said if, there was three categories of housing in the Chinatown market. They prefer housing under the first two categories. They said the third category, those, those residents would never be a shopper in their store.
All right, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, those are your questions. Thank you for coming this evening. Next speaker is Michael Sung, number thirty-two. Michael Sung? No, okay. Next, we have Michael Tan. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. My name is Michael Tan. I have been steeped in Chinatown my entire life. I have been steeped in business my entire life, first with my parents' small business, manning the cash register when I was like seven at our corner store, and to today as the director of finance at Unbounce, a software company of a hundred and sixty employees here in Vancouver. Previously, I'd held a similar role at Hootsuite. And prior to entering tech, I've also worked in the mining and real estate industries, also in financial roles. I am currently a member of the B C Tech Association CFO Council. I mention these to provide the context of my business bona fides. I am for the record pro-development and pro-business. My job, anyone's job, when they were employed by a profit-seeking organization, is to make money, whether it's by growing revenues or decreasing costs. For the most part, a business is blind to other considerations such as heritage conservation and social impacts. I applaud the many businesses who do consider these impacts, but there are many businesses who will choose profit maximization every time. I believe that strong guidelines are necessary to ensure that real estate developers do not have free rein over Chinatown and the cultural heritage of this important neighborhood be preserved. Stronger guidelines are not anti-development. Stronger guidelines are meant to ensure that real estate developers who prioritize profit maximization will build community-appropriate structures and have clear criteria to do so. Last year, the application for a development permit relating to one oh-five Kiefer was rejected by the D P board on the rationale that the building was inappropriate for the community, much to the shock and dismay of the applicant, B D Development, real estate industry observers, and to be honest, Chinatown advocates like myself. I attribute this surprise to existing guidelines as being too ambiguous. If the existing ambiguous guidelines were to remain, I believe this would actually act as a continuing deterrent to development at all in Chinatown, whether it be market or social. Stronger and clearer guidelines of the amendments to H A one and H A one A proposed today that are endorsed by city staff will ensure that real estate developers have better definitions of what is appropriate in Chinatown and to reduce the costs associated with rejected D P applications so late into the development process. Reduced ambiguity will lead to better investment decisions for those in the real estate industry. Mayor and Council, I'm asking you to vote in favor of the amendments in front of you today and also that you add the following clauses, that you limit outright development on lot lengths to twenty-five feet or existing lot size and to make dwelling use conditional unless, you know, they are for a hundred percent social housing. For those who think stronger guidelines would deter development, I would say, you know, give us money, guys, some credit. You know, we always figured out how to make some money. So, thank you, Council.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lawrence Dur. He is the president to the Children's Society. Good evening and welcome.
Dear Mayor and Council, my name is Lawrence Dur. I'm the chairman of Children's Society. Our society has a long history in Vancouver. This year, we celebrate the seventy-fifth anniversary of our incorporation. The Children's Society's mission is to better the community through programming direct at immigrant and senior and youth. Programs have include test return assistance, settlement service for new immigrant, English as second language tutoring, and legal assistance. Our society provide non-market housing for low-income senior at the Children Tower at three hundred and twenty-five Kiefer Street. The Children Tower was completed in nineteen seventy-one. As a twelve-story eighty-one home, non-market in housing compass for senior. We have successfully fundraised and developed this building and have been managing and running this housing for the past forty-seven years. Since completion, many hundreds of families have come to call the Children Tower home. Our society have been a part of Chinatown for a long time. And we want to see Chinatown not just survive, but thrive. To answer that, we ask that the city work in favor of stronger policies like the amendment to the H A one A guideline in front of you. Raster condominiums are not what we want in Chinatown. We ask that the only, the city make development of new building conditional unless it is for hundred percent senior and social housing. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Thank you for your, for your words. And next, we're Fred Ma, speaker number thirty-five, followed by Chanel Lee. Welcome, Mr. Ma.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'm the president of the Chinatown Society Heritage Buildings Association. Together, we own twelve heritage buildings in Chinatown. We provide the bulk of the low-income housing in Chinatown. First, I would like, I would like to thank your dedicated staff for working so hard for the last three and a half years to produce this excellent report. The twenty-eleven height review was a compromised decision. I can remember some property owners lobbying us to agree with the increase in height with few design guidelines or policies for the neighborhood. One large property owner even said that he wanted to develop the property with Chinatown characteristics immediately if the height review went through. We said at that time, let's try it and see what happens. Surprise, surprise, this person sold his property within a couple of months of the passing of the height review to a developer who has no interest in Chinatown, in the Chinatown community. Now you can see what the results are. It is a disaster. None of the new developments has any Chinatown characteristic. In fact, there's no difference between any of these new buildings and any buildings downtown or the city gate development. People will wonder, where is Chinatown? When stopped with two banks taking a whole block on Main Street. Rents are rising rapidly. Traditional families run small businesses are driven out. None of the new businesses cater to the people who lived in and around the neighborhood for years. Many are low-income working and elderly people. Going to at the present rate of change, the low-income and elderly people will not be able to shop in Chinatown anymore. Developers are assembling property for large development sites. Properties are being flipped overnight. Development is going at a pace that we have never seen before. It is at the wild west for developers. Some people say that we do not want development in Chinatown. That is far from the truth. In fact, we welcome development in Chinatown. But it has to be a smart development and appropriate to the neighborhood. Vancouver is made up of neighborhoods such as Commercial Drive, Kisselino, and so on. Chinatown is the most historic of these neighborhoods. It is a national historic site. Nowhere in North America can you find the public spaces the likes of Dr. Sinison Garden and the Chinese Cultural Center together in Chinatown. and the Chinese Cultural Center together in Chinatown. Vancouver, Chinatown is the crown jewel, not just for Vancouver, but for the whole of Canada, as well as for the North America. If you want to save this precious neighborhood where people can shop for Chinese goods, eat Chinese food, traditional small family business can thrive, and visitors can visit Chinatown with sounds, sights, and excitement of the senses, you have no choice but to vote yes to the amendments before you. In April, you voted to accept the recommendations of Advisory Committee on the historic discrimination against the people of Chinese descent. We wanted the apology, we also wanted action for our future. The one concrete sustaining action of these recommendations was a proposal to apply to UNESCO to declare Chinatown as a world heritage site. You have allocated a budget and set up a transition team to work on the application. Amendments before you set a very good baseline for the Conservation Development Plan and the Business Plan for the application for the living community for the UNESCO application. We are looking forward to work with your staff and the community in the coming months on the Conservation Development Plan as well as the Development Plan. Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ma. You have Counselor Louie questions? Questions for you?
Can't just keep that easy, Lee. Mr. Ma, thank you for coming this evening and that little bit of history of how we got to the place where we are today. I would agree that the 2011 decision, the last plan, was a bit of a compromise in order to be where we are today. Do you see this as a compromise, this recommendation?
Well, what happens is that during three and a half years of consultation, your staff went through numerous consultations, I don't know how many.
Lots, yeah.
Okay? And, you know, as far as I can remember, I myself at least attended three or four of them. So, you know, it is a compromise in the fact that your staff heard from the community.
So, Mr. Ma, what I'm after is, as I had asked Mr. Lee earlier, this, and in his answer to me, part of this exercise is trying to come to a plan that works both for the community and for processing through the city. Currently, the framework for the discretionary height for an extra 30 feet from 90 to 120, let's say, for social housing has created, generated a significant amount of opposition. And so I wanted to hear from you today whether or not this discretion between 75 and 90 would just generate the same type of controversy that, and that we've perhaps are fooling ourselves that this compromise, this newest compromise, would actually accomplish what we're after, or that we should just set a hard line, whether it be 75 or setting it 90 or somewhere in between, rather than having this discretion, but recognizing that perhaps we're giving up some of that flexibility necessary to create the urban form that we're after as well. And so that's what I'm after in my question, and hopefully you'll give me something.
Well, you know, there's always controversy in development, whether we like it or not. Okay? You look at what happened on Commercial Drive, you know, at the Broadway area. Okay? And that was a real controversy. And I don't think you can get away from controversy, but you have to make a decision. As fathers of the city, you have to make hard decisions. And what happens is that, you know, with this, that some people call that law zoning.
Fathers and mothers.
Pardon me, I'm sorry?
Fathers and mothers, or, let's make it gender neutral, how's that?
Anyway, you know, I think that we can't get away from controversy, but you have to make a decision.
Okay. That's your answer. Good answer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ma. And we're on, we missed a speaker. Sounds like he was locked outside there, unfortunately. Michael Sung?
Thank you.
Speaker number 32.
My name is Michael Sung, and I was trapped in a bathroom across the street, so that was exciting. Thank you for the time to address you. I'm a member of Chinatown Voices, and my family has its roots in Chinatown, reaching back into, I'm sorry? I'm sorry. There we go. Better? Great. My name is Michael Sung. I'm a member of Chinatown Voices, and my family has its roots in Chinatown, reaching back into the early 20th century. While preparing for this hearing, I found a Chinatown phone book entry from 1938 for Pacific Produce, our family's fruit and vegetable company, then located on 245 Kiefer Street. I'm here to speak of divisiveness. I think I break no news that acrimony and disunity have overtaken this community. And it is my view that these planning recommendations rife with conditional limits only serve to fuel ever-widening schisms between neighbors. I'm not so cynical to believe that proponents of this rezoning want anything less than what I do, a vibrant Chinatown, one that has reversed decades of physical and social decay. I do, however, strenuously disagree with their prescriptions on how we get there. When we've spoken to those running businesses in the neighborhood, the feedback is crystal clear. They are crying out for more heads and beds in the immediate area. And let's also acknowledge more data. By Planning's findings, new homes built under the current revitalization plan have brought a 28% increase in the neighborhood's population, representing nearly 100% absorption of these new homes. Unless that growth continues to a point of critical mass, local merchants consistently believe they're on borrowed time, and the intangibles they supply to make Chinatown special and unique will be lost forever. And don't mistake me for a one-and-done developer who will be gone from the neighborhood when seller is complete. That growth needs to be encouraged intelligently and in a way that respects Chinatown's heritage and a spirit of new beginnings. As with any healthy community, it will require a diverse group of inhabitants. The area should no more be an enclave for wealthy citizens than it should be where Vancouver exclusively grapples with issues of poverty and addiction. You'll find that Chinatown's residents have an enormous heart and understand their role in supporting less fortunate neighbors. But in reaching these goals, the process is rending the social fabric by encouraging polar opposites to duke it out in the public arena of meetings and hearings. Whomever screams loudest with the most outrageous tactics and Twitter-worthy policies is being rewarded. It's no way to run a civil society. Let me offer an example of a conditional limit that makes little rational sense, that Counselor Louie just alluded to. The proposed policy says that buildings in Chinatown should have a conditional maximum height of no more than 75 or 90 feet, yet the outright heights are lower. If staff and their supporters agree that 90-foot-tall buildings fit in the character of this neighborhood, then why are we forcing community members to fight it out for an additional 15 feet? This is an example where council should set clear expectations with outright limits to the product of careful thought. That is, of course, not what planning has recommended. This requirement to ask mother may I represents a lack of conviction, a hedge that they haven't quite got it right, and the damage from this inability to make clear the rules is being visited on community members with every harassing tweet and with every high-volume public meeting. As it stands, council and planning need to support a lot of fence mending. In the last week, I've worked hard to meet in person with those that disagree with me. Due to an overly lax revitalization policy, what's clear to me is that these peoples are jaded to the process. The trust is at an all-time low that civic governance is protecting them from buildings that we can all agree were primarily too bulky. In these conversations, however, what becomes apparent is how much we agree on, even at a granular policy level. There are nods of agreement and cautious optimism. But where does the policy go wrong? It's when good intentions run up against extremist activists and professionals who have let their responsibility to investors override their ability to listen effectively. There's a chilling effect on those who already are systematically underrepresented. Who wants to be vilified for speaking about how they think their community can be improved? Already tonight, there are tweets contemplating retributions for the companies that agreed to speak in our video. As a member of Chinatown Voices, I'll reinforce that planning's recommendations are directionally correct. Buildings in Chinatown probably shouldn't be 120 feet tall. It's ludicrous that there's no FSR limit. However, both in recommended process and scope, planning's recommendations have lost the plot. The overriding force for change remains attracting new residents and providing competitive space for businesses to serve them. Slowing the flow of residents only slows Chinatown's nascent recovery. So I ask you to consider the following amendments to this policy. Set an outright limit of 75 and 90 feet for each zone and permit no variances. Set a reasonable FSR limit of 6.0. Let's stop trying to dictate how buildings can respond to demand for housing or commercial space. It's Orwellian. Rental units on mezzanine and third floors will be in service of growing a base of residents. And businesses should not be forced to relocate to an area of town if they outgrow the small spaces necessitated by frontage limits. Just as we need a diversity of residents, we need a diversity of shop spaces and larger lots to accommodate this. But above all, clear boundaries need to be set so that Chinatown can heal from years of bruising and destructive discourse. My mother has always reinforced a Chinese saying about family unity to me and my brothers. She says that fingers should bend inwards, not outwards. For too long, Chinatown's fingers have been spread further and further apart for the benefit of others. By enacting these amendments, which enjoy broad-based support by those that will be directly affected, council will help to bring those fingers back together where they belong. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. You have questions from Counselor Jiang.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You talked, just want to follow up a little bit. A lot of the narrative from Chinatown Voices is about providing, getting new residents into Chinatown.
Absolutely.
And there's also a narrative that's out there about what type of resident, good, bad, Chinese, non-Chinese.
Of course.
Do you have any opinions of what type of residents should be attracting?
I don't think it should be city policy to be socially engineering the racial makeup of a neighborhood. I think that there is an important and historical basis in Chinatown for Chinese residents to live there, but I don't think that city policy should be socially engineering what color person lives there, and I think that people from all creeds, colors, social backgrounds are capable of supporting, contributing businesses.
Okay, that's good. Do you, does you or your family own property down there now?
We still do, yes. A small, we have a very small exposure. For the most part, I'm mostly interested in protecting neighborhood that is a formative experience in my youth.
Okay. Are you related to the Pacific Produce songs?
I sure am.
Who's your dad?
It was Randy's son.
Randy, as I knew, I used to work for your dad.
No.
Years ago. You grew up. I remember you as a kid. All right, thanks a lot, Ryan.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that's your questions. Thank you very much for being here tonight. And our next speaker is Chanel Lee, speaker number 36.
It's automatic. Hi, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me today. My name is Chanel Lee. I am a small business owner. I am a bus driver, and I've worked in the downtown east side and Chinatown for the last four years with Youth for Chinese Seniors. I'm very proud to say that Youth for Chinese Seniors is now registered as Yarrow Intergenerational Society for Justice. This is our debut at City Hall, and we have a drop-in space at the Sanwa Centre with B.C. Artscape. We held a drop-in hours today, allowing seniors to come and ask us any questions, book hospital appointments with us so that we can take them to appointments and help them translate. We also have tea and have conversation. We're really trying to build it as an intergenerational drop-in space. We had a senior come in today with an issue of hoarding, and he received a letter from his landlord saying that if he doesn't clean up his mess, his stuff by 50%, then there is risk of eviction. And my, I had let him know that we are there for him, there are volunteers to support him if he needs, and that if he receives an eviction notice, we are there for him as well. This is his second letter that he received. The first letter he received but wasn't able to find translation for it. And he lives in a building that is all English managed. Every correspondence is in English, and so he is not able to advocate for himself when there is an issue with his tenancy. And if there was more social housing built for Chinese seniors in the neighborhood, we could house him in a more culturally appropriate, accessible place where he would understand right away and get support right away for his tenancy issues. So generally, in regards to this policy, I think any kind of restriction on development is good. There should be more restrictions on development, but I am disappointed in the paragraph that says social housing isn't feasible, and there isn't an actual commitment to finding ways to legislate social housing in new developments. I hope council doesn't see us, young people and seniors, as an angry mob that doesn't want change. I don't like the Chinatown plan as it stands, but I also don't want Chinatown to go back to the 80s when it was lively, when my parents arrived here. I think that Chinatown has molded to what the community has needed at the time, and I do believe that the future is in our hands. And my vision and Yarrow's vision is a thriving, equitable, intergenerational community. Something really special that I am really touched by in recent years is the influx of queer and trans youth that have a really special investment in the future of Chinatown and has been putting a lot of work in building a community that is for them as well as low-income seniors. I wanted to touch on, while I have a minute left, I wanted to touch on the San Francisco plan that was mentioned first thing when this meeting started. I really like it because it says more than zoning, it says more than restricting heights and widths. It talks about, it talks about managing new business offices coming in, whether it is suitable for the neighborhood. It talks about bigger, like fast-food restaurants or financial institutions that might displace smaller retail, which need to be limited or subject to discretionary approval. They also consider bus routes that come in through Chinatown and make sure that the buses are more reflective of Chinese ridership or, you know, non-English-speaking ridership by including bilingual signage and P.A. system. And so I just kind of want to paint a picture of Chinatown for me. We want bubble tea shops, we want karaoke places, we want youth spaces, senior spaces, health and rec centers, and especially leadership development opportunities for people to learn and get trained to govern and make decisions about the neighborhood.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. No questions for you, but thank you. Next up is Yolanda Louie. Good evening.
Do I speak into this, right?
Yeah, with the red light there, yeah.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for having me here to share and speak. I wanted to first acknowledge that we are on the ancestral lands of the Musqueam, Tsleil-Waututh, and Squamish nations, and that we are talking about development and building and housing on these lands.
Could you just speak into the mic a little closer? We're having trouble picking you up on there.
Hello, hello, hello? Yeah? Okay. And so I actually work with Chanel as well. We are part of Yarrow Intergenerational Society for Justice. I'm going to speak a little bit about that. So the Yarrow Intergenerational Society for Justice, I'm actually reading a letter that was submitted to council earlier this afternoon. Formerly, Youth for Chinese Seniors has been providing services, education, and advocacy for low-income immigrant seniors in Chinatown and the downtown east side since 2015. Our vision is of a Chinatown, as Chanel has mentioned, that is intergenerational, equitable, and thriving, with accessible and culturally relevant services and an environment that cherishes our seniors and our youth. We are grateful to the city of Vancouver for its generous social responsibility fund grant to B.C. Artscape, which enables us to provide a drop-in center and community programming to low-income Chinatown residents alongside our case management and outreach services. Through our work, excuse me, with over 300 seniors and 80 youth volunteers in Chinatown, we have found that the most pressing issue facing Chinatown is the lack of social housing. We fully support Chinatown's We fully support Chinatown Concern Group and residents of Chinatown in their call for half of all new residential units in Chinatown to be social housing at welfare and pension rates, and a pause on new market rate developments until the number of social housing units in the neighborhood has caught up to the current number of market rate housing units. Chinatown is one of the poorest neighborhoods in Vancouver. Three out of every five Chinatown residents are poor. Chinatown is where the few culturally and linguistically appropriate services in this region are available to them. Yet nearly all new housing in the neighborhood is being sold at market rates, and the new zoning policy proposed by the city of Vancouver will do nothing to change this. As an organization that is committed to serving the Chinatown community, we cannot support any zoning policy that does not enable or provide permanent affordable housing directly in the neighborhood. Under the proposed zoning policy, the city of Vancouver would permit developers to build condominiums and townhouses outright in Chinatown. Without any requirements to provide social housing, affordable housing, or even rental housing, our community has consistently asked at consultation after consultation for the city of Vancouver to change its policies and make other investments to ensure that new social housing can be built in Chinatown before luxury developments for the displaced residents. The impact of height, width, or density of the proposed projects on Chinatown's character is important. However, what we find more concerning is the lack of political and financial commitment to building the social housing units that our community urgently needs. We urge you to take leadership and direct staff to respond to the calls of the community by creating recommendations for building social housing at welfare and pension rates in Chinatown. We ask you to take active responsibility for securing funding commitments from all three levels of government so that the number of social housing units in the neighborhood equals the number of market rate residential units. We know that this is possible because the city of Vancouver is resourceful and frequently successful at securing funding and negotiating agreements with senior government for other projects, such as the Millennium Line Broadway extension and modular housing. We need your leadership in advocating for the residents of Chinatown and the downtown east side. Affordability is essential for Chinatown to exist. In April 2018, Mayor Gregor Robertson delivered a formal apology for past discrimination against residents of Chinese descent. Yet the proposed zoning policy may perpetuate discrimination and displacement, especially by permitting new development without enabling or providing any social housing for existing poor, immigrant, and senior residents. It is not possible to meaningfully preserve Chinatown without ensuring that residents are able to remain in the place that they have made culturally and historically significant. Yarrow Intergenerational Society for Justice can only support any zoning policy that includes commitments to build new social housing units at welfare and pension rates directly in Chinatown. As the council, we believe that you have the responsibility and the authority to prevent the displacement of our community from Chinatown. We urge you to take all necessary steps to fight for the right to housing for our elders and the broader working-class community.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Our next speaker is Komen Chow. Is Komen Chow here? Komen Chow not here. Next speaker is 39, Christopher Lainanen. Got that right, followed by Angela Kruger, speaker number 40.
Good evening. Mayor and council, thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for choosing to refer this important discussion to public hearing. That choice is appreciated, and just as in the decision council made last year around the 105 Kiefer rezoning application, it goes a long way towards rebuilding faith in the democratic processes in this city. So I want to start by acknowledging that you're deciding the future of and holding this discussion on the unceded territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Salawitutu peoples. The land we're talking about is stolen, and in this time of reconciliation, we must weigh that heavily when making plans for its development. Who will benefit from the decisions you make tonight? And, just as importantly, who will suffer? My name is Christopher Lainanen. I'm a media professional, a renter, and a longtime resident of Vancouver, and I'm here to speak in support, with some reservations, of the requested amendments under discussion tonight, with a hope that council will offer further amendments in line with the people's vision for Chinatown as outlined by Chinatown Action Group and the Chinatown Concern Group. Though I don't believe the proposed amendments go nearly far enough, the fierce resistance by developers and affluent property owners tells me that the rejection will benefit them enormously at the expense of Chinatown's oldest and poorest residents, along with all who want a Chinatown with a human scale and a distinct character. A June 12 report by United Way of the Lower Mainland and the Social Planning and Research Council of British Columbia revealed that in Chinatown and the neighboring downtown east side of Gastown, more than 40% of seniors were living in poverty in 2015. There's little reason to believe that this number has improved. Not only is this a shocking indictment of the structure of our society, but it suggests that these neighborhoods represent the last remaining refuge for the poorest people in our city. We also know that in Chinatown especially, this demographic skews Chinese, often including those who are not English speakers, who depend on the affordable and culturally specific grocery stores and other services the neighborhood provides, as well as the communities they've built there, which have existed for decades. In light of these facts, and in addition to the recommendations being made in these zoning amendments, I encourage the city to return to an earlier recommendation from city staff, that dwelling use be conditional unless it's 100% social housing, with the added stipulation that it be at welfare and pension rates. Given the massive increase in market condos in Chinatown over the past few years, and the recognition that barely any new dwellings were devoted to seniors or low-income people, the city needs to establish regulations that will protect and house Chinatown's most vulnerable residents for years to come. Indeed, what is truly necessary is a pause on all new market developments until a balance has been achieved. Beyond concerns of housing, are concerns of character. The space in front of the enormous towers at Main and Kiefer, especially the HSBC, feels like a dead zone, completely out of scale with the rest of the neighborhood and with community building in general. Large storefronts reduce the sense that a neighborhood is walkable, discouraging sidewalks as gathering places for public encounters. A lengthy glass facade is hostile to human interaction. In Chinatown especially, this is very out of place. This is why I encourage council to limit lot assemblies and keep lot widths to 25 or 50 feet, the fine urban grain that Joe Wei spoke of, while allowing exceptions for social housing projects if need be, echoing the needs reflected by some earlier speakers. So this is a debate that we've had before in microcosm. The 105 Kiefer hearings represented an outpouring of support and feeling from across the city about what kind of Chinatown we all want for the future. Though tonight's attendance is smaller than those hearings, I want to gesture to the more than 1,200 signatures on the petition to even hold tonight's hearing, and would argue that many people feel they've already made their opinions known. Mayor and council, at those earlier hearings, you heard those words, and you saw those facts, and you witnessed those emotions, and ultimately, I think you made the right decision. Now you have an opportunity to enshrine those lessons and choices for years to come for Chinatown at large. For the future of a recognizable and humane Chinatown, please accept and strengthen the amendments under discussion tonight. Thanks again for your time.
Thanks for being here tonight. And we're on to speaker number 40, Angela Kruger, followed by 41, Jun Chow. Good evening.
Hi. Is that about the right height? Is that working? Great.
It's good.
Yeah, thanks for bringing this to a public hearing. I think that was a great call on everyone's part. Get to listen to all of us again. So I just, yeah, I wanted to start by saying that we are on the unceded Coast Salish territories of the Musqueam, Salawitutu, and Squamish First Nations. And so for me, what that means is remembering and centering in our hearts and minds that, in fact, this hearing about zoning in Chinatown is predicated in the first place on colonial logics of land title and property ownership. That being said, we still have to discuss it. So I want to support the spirit of protecting the neighborhood of Chinatown and the community in that place that has guided the many city staff and Chinatown residents and activists in developing these amendments, but I oppose the idea that the amendments are enough. What this means is that as a Vancouverite, a Chinatown ally, and Japanese-Canadian who, I will add, has no neighborhood to go back to, I do want Chinatown and the people who live there to be protected, and I can see that supporting these proposed amendments is virtually the only real option I have at this hearing to help facilitate that protection. However, yeah, they're not enough. So here are eight things that would strengthen the protective force of the proposed zoning in Chinatown. One, put policies in place to prevent lot assemblies. So this means that you use your powers, the city, to stop rich people from buying lots that are next to each other where they can build giant developments. Two, define the term "social housing" in Chinatown in a way that explicitly supports low-income people and seniors, that is, no more than maximum welfare and pension allowance. This means that you use your powers, the city, to be specific with your language so that developers cannot interpret your policies in creative ways that prioritize market housing at the expense of low-income residents and seniors. Three, limit building heights to maximum 50 feet tall and building frontages to maximum 50% wide, with social housing and nonprofit developments considered separately. This means that you use your powers, the city, to support Chinatown to grow in ways that meet the needs of people who live there and have lived there for a long time and need to live there, rather than the needs of people who want to move in and, though maybe unintentionally, displace low-income people and seniors in the process. Four, zone Chinatown as a single unified district, because that's what it is. It may be fluid, and it may overlap with other communities, but it is one place. You don't say, "Oh, yes, this is my home, I live in Chinatown." You say, "Oh, yes, this is my home, I live in Chinatown," and your zoning should reflect this. Five, designate Chinatown as a heritage conservation area. I trust that the flooding of people, languages, emotions, and voices that came from Chinatown to this room for 105 Kiefer is evidence of how much we take heritage of this place seriously, of how much we take our responsibility as those who inherit this neighborhood seriously. So please join us in taking this seriously by designating Chinatown as a heritage conservation area. Six, support culturally appropriate Chinatown businesses. This means that you admit that you know what we mean when we say "retail," and you know what some other people mean when they say "retail," and you know the difference. What Chinese seniors don't need in nearby shops is fancy Italian-Japanese fusion cuisine. What they do need are foods that they can actually afford and enjoy, slippers, brooms, baskets, and buggies. Support those businesses, please. Seven, rezone the 105 Kiefer site that is no market development allowed. 100% pension-welfare-rate social housing would be nice, with an intergenerational, multi-use-free community space, with an emphasis on seniors, if you would. And eight, please check in. I commend the work that the city put into making consultation processes accessible, but not only does this need to continue as the norm, it needs to be improved. That will take time, but it's possible and necessary. Keep this communication that has been established open, and put the accessible consultation processes that you celebrated at the beginning of this hearing to work for a formal review of the impact of this rezoning, whether it goes through or not in three to five years. And I'll just close today by reminding all of us that it was on this day, June 28, 2018, that all the tenants who had been living in their Regent Hotel had to move out. I spent all day moving a friend of mine out of there, because the building was so decrepit that it was closed, of course. And while I recognize that the city has worked extremely hard to get tenants into safe, affordable, and livable housing that meets their needs, I would venture to say that this would have been a lot easier if there was more social housing for them to move to. You know that there are more Sohota-owned SROs and others in the downtown east side that are in terrible condition. Let's be proactive, let's build more 100% social housing now, and let's start now. And if all you can do, mayor and council, to meaningfully protect this neighborhood, is pass these zoning amendments, then please pass them. But I also am quite convinced that you can do more.
Okay, thank you very much. Right on time. Thanks for being here tonight. Jun Chow, speaker number 41. And then council will have to make a decision on what we do next, whether we recess or continue this evening. Welcome, Ms. Chow.
Good evening, mayor and council. How's this? Pretty good? Okay. I'm here this evening to support staff's recommendations as per its policy report, amendments to the Chinatown HA1 and HA1A district schedule, design guidelines, and policies. I also respectfully request council to consider, number one, stronger policies to prevent lot assemblies by limiting outright development lot width to a maximum of 25 feet or existing lot width, and, number two, conditional dwelling use unless 100% social housing to prioritize over market condos. I want to acknowledge the work of staff in presenting an extremely comprehensive summary, context, and rationale for the amendments proposed, and as a result of many years of community consultation. In particular, the recent and very thorough yellow memo that shows in numbers and percentages that the pace of change in Chinatown observed since 2011 has, without a doubt, exceeded the Vancouver average, and we're talking about an extremely fragile and vulnerable community here. The amendments are not perfect and probably could go further, as advocated by other speakers this evening, but I believe they give Chinatown a fighting chance. They give Chinatown a fighting chance now after council's apology to the Chinese community, and now that there is a real strategy for authentic protection and revitalization of Chinatown through its efforts to seek UNESCO World Heritage Site designation. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here tonight. We are almost at 10 o'clock, so let me just check in with council, see what we would like to do collectively. We are on speaker number 42. There are 30 speakers still registered. And councillor Reimer, do you want to make a suggestion?
I was going to move that we at least extend till 11:00. I think, given that the next meeting date is during the day, there are people who've waited four hours already and may not be able to come back during the day, so I'd like to at least try and hear them tonight.
Okay. So you want to move?
Extend to 11:00.
Okay, that's moved.
We have to decide at 11:00 what we do at that point.
Yeah, we will have to come back to it at 11:00. Motion to extend to 11:00, councillor DeGenova.
Well, I also know that this meeting was scheduled, and many people do know that council makes a decision at 10:00 p.m., and often we've left at 10:00 p.m., so I also wouldn't want to miss those people as well, who perhaps have already left. That being said, I know that I'm not going to be able to stay past 10:00 p.m., and that's what was in my schedule. I also understand we have a backup day for July the 4th, I believe, starting at 9:30 a.m.
Correct.
So I will be back then, but no, I'm not in favor of staying.
And councillor Ball?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not able to see medical records.
Okay, that's certainly what council practices. If people have to leave, they can watch the tapes, watch the video before we are back to it again. Councillor Louis?
Well, I would echo those sentiments. I think in order for a bit of time management for the people that have stayed around, and there's a lot, we should probably try to hear at least the next hour, and give that notice to anybody else that might fall outside that range, and those councillors that need to leave, they can view the tape, and then we can make a decision at a later point in time, but try to accommodate the speakers that are at least here at this point.
Okay. And councillor DeGenova, you have more?
I understood that it had to be unanimous to continue to extend. Mr. Mayor, and I wouldn't want anyone to, and I know people have made statements before about other people leaving after 10:00 p.m., even though the reasons stated. I've seen it on tape when I've been watching myself. So for that reason, I understand that it has to be a unanimous decision to stay past 10:00 p.m., and I understand that myself and councillor Ball were not in favor of
That's what it sounds like, but are you saying you wouldn't stay and you would watch the video, or you won't?
Well, when I've done that before, it's been misrepresented by the chair of the meeting, and not you, Mr. Mayor, but I don't feel comfortable since that's happened. I know that some of my colleagues have reiterated the reasons why I've left. I know that some of my colleagues have, have reiterated the reasons why I've left. But because of that, and it's out of my control what's said about me when I'm not here, I prefer that we didn't.
Okay, I'm, okay. If, well, I'll call the question anyway. If, no matter what, we are meeting on Tuesday, July the fourth, at nine thirty in the morning to hear more speakers and continue from there, Wednesday, July the fourth. Thank you for that. And the question is whether we extend to eleven P.M. this evening to hear more speakers who are here tonight, who may not be able to be here during the daytime. So those, all those in favor of extending? Any opposed? And we have number four opposed, so that does not carry, which means we are not going to keep going tonight. We will recess at our, our normal ten P.M. time. And that means we'll be back here for July the fourth, Wednesday, nine thirty A.M. And we will start on, with Speaker number forty-two, Stephanie Ling. And if Council has questions to staff, they can email them as well, if there's any clarifying questions. And that means we are finished for the night. We are recessed from this public hearing.